Good evening, welcome to Children's Families Committee. Mr May, could you do the statement that you have to make at the start of every meeting, please?
Thank you, convener. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks Roger. Convener?
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander?
I'm here.
Councillor Anderson?
Good evening, present.
Lord Provost?
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost?
Present.
Councillor Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor Councillor Ermackler?
Here.
Councillor Flynn?
Evening, present.
Councillor Lynn?
Present.
Bailey Roberts?
She is having some technical difficulties, we'll try dialing in shortly.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Rome?
I'm here.
Bailey Sowers?
I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland?
Tolland, yeah, here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Councillor Finnigan?
Yeah.
Councillor McHugh?
Present.
Councillor McIrvin?
Present.
Councillor Malone?
Apologies.
Thank you. Councillor Scullen?
Present.
Councillor Shears?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey McPherson?
A good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Crichton?
Present.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Bailey Scott?
I'm here.
Mrs McBean?
Present.
Mrs Legg?
Present.
Mr Chohan? Mr Chohan? Markham is absent. Mr Baxter?
Evening, Arlene.
Ms Barclay?
Hi.
Mrs Javid? Mrs Javid? Mr Anderson McGinnis?
Present.
That concludes the roll call.
Okay, thank you for that, Arlene. Can we just go on to the first item of business, please?
Yep. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Convener, can I just perhaps ask a point of order at this point in time it affects tonight's committee and indeed the other two committees? And I'm just really looking for some guidance from the chief executive. I noticed that integrated impact assessments appear to have fallen off the face of the earth and aren't being sent out along with the committee papers. Now, I'm aware of the fact that I think we agreed some time ago that these would be subject to some form of review, because I think a number of us felt that some of them could be a bit more robust and had perhaps been written with rose-tinted spectacles on, shall we put it that way? But I didn't really expect during such a review that we just wouldn't get them at all, because I think in terms of equalities, I think it's very important that we have integrated impact assessments. There are a number of items tonight where I think these would be helpful and I would just really like some guidance from the chief executive as to exactly what the position is. Okay, I'll invite Mr Cogan to come on and answer that.
Thanks, convener, and thanks Bailey McPherson. So officers have carried out a review of a qualities impact assessment and officers are currently undergoing training for the new scheme, which will be launched later in this year. I can give you a date, but we'd need to check back my calendar, so I'll circulate that out with the meeting. Until the new scheme is implemented, the existing equalities impact assessments should be carried out by officers with the impact assessments being included and noted within reports. If the reports on tonight's agenda note that they have considered it and nothing is attached, then I would have to speak to individual officers to understand why they believe that to be the case. But the existing scheme is still live while officers undergo the training for the new scheme, which will be launched later this year.
Okay, I don't want to prolong this, but the bottom line is they're all missing. So I think it calls into degree of question if we really have all the data and information to make informed decisions tonight. Obviously, I'm not going to take up any more time just now, Mr Cogan, but could you perhaps look into this and get back to myself and other members of the committee? Thank you.
Convener, if I can come back in, I'm happy to come back to all members of committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr Cogan. And with that, Arlene, can we move on to the next item of business, please?
Yep, I'll just go back to declaration of interest, item one. Are there any declarations?
Okay, I'm going to give a couple of seconds, because I know last week at Plannen there was a bit of a lag between people putting their hands up and putting in the chat. So I'll give you a couple of seconds, but I don't see anybody, so I take it there's no declarations.
Okay. Item two, religious representation on the Children and Families Services Committee. This is for approval.
Okay, happy to approve this. The committee agree? Okay, and welcome you both back onto the committee and look forward to working with you over the next few months and years. Okay, Arlene?
Item three, pupil equity fund update. This is for noting.
Okay, the report is there in front of you. Does anybody have any questions? Councillor Shears, I see you've put yourself in the chat.
Thanks, convener. So in appendix two, you can see the PEF funding level for the next year. And in paragraph six point two, this is worded as being fixed across four years, providing clarity to support strategic planning. And I've had it confirmed to me by officers that this funding won't be adjusted for inflation in the next four years. With inflation at nine point one percent and rising, convener, would you agree with the Labour group that this isn't a funding fix, as is worded, but in fact a substantial funding cut over the next four years?
Sorry, I'll move our officers just to explain the background to this. Mrs May?
Thank you, convener, and thank you for the question, yes. And we have had that conversation with members to try and explain that, yeah, there's a cut in this year's PEF overall fund because there was an uplift to accommodate Covid and there was an increased percentage over these last two years during Covid times, which has now been taken away, that's removed. So we've gone back to our calculated allocation according to the government's formula. And yet, part of the national consultation around moving forward with SAC and PEF, officers representing across all thirty-two local authorities did ask that it would be really good in terms of long-term planning and sustainability and continuity of practice and work, surrounding our work teams around PEF to have guaranteed funding for the next three years. So we've been given that guarantee that the funding will remain for the next three years and the rest of this parliament, basically. But, yeah, it does not include any allocations in line with inflation, but it is something that we did ask for, which was the knowledge of the funding for three years as opposed to what we've had up to now, which was one year at a time. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you, Mrs May. Councillor Shears, do you have a follow-up question?
Oh, that answers my question, thank you.
Okay, Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr convener. The case studies are quite interesting and I thank the officers for providing them. Are the case studies available for other schools across the city? I'm sure other elected members would be keen to learn the specific actions and successes of the use of the equity funding in their schools in their own local areas and wards.
Don't think that would be a problem, but Mrs May, do you want to confirm that?
Absolutely, yes. We just put a selection to keep the committee report a reasonable size, convener, but there's certainly lots of evidence of work over many years. More than happy for members to contact their local schools or if it would help to have a cross-sector briefing around some of this later on and after the summer recess, that could be done as well.
Yeah, happy to make sure that's arranged. Is that okay for you, Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr convener, that's great, thank you.
Don't see anybody else wishing to come in, so can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Arlene?
Item four, primary provision to serve the Western Gateway. You have a report before you.
Okay, again, the report is in front of you. Does anybody have any questions or anything they wish to say at this point? Councillor Shears?
Thanks again, convener. So page thirty-eight, paragraph one point eight and one point eight-two, detail the funding for the new school. And I'm sure the Scottish Government and developer contributions are welcomed by all of us here. Are there any further funding opportunities that the council could explore if, say, ScotGov don't mean fifty percent as we're anticipating, or whether that all needs to come from council budget and have a follow-up as well?
Okay, I'll pass over to Mrs May.
Thank you, convener. Just to say that we are in constant negotiations and discussions with Scottish Futures Trust colleagues around any potential changes to funding going forward. But just now, we plan to make a phase-three LEAP bid and the closing date for that will be thirtieth of September. That's the date we've been given just now, late for this year, and that will give fifty percent of the cost of the projected cost to build a primary school in the Western Gateway. So we are working on that bid and it will be ready to go before that due date.
Okay, and see that the chief exec wants to come in, so Mr Cogan?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just in response to Councillor Shears' question, I can confirm that the council will look at all available sources of grant funding to support the new school. As Mrs May has outlined, we will focus our discussions on LEAP III, but should other funding bids become available, we will actively pursue those through the corporate funding team.
Okay, thank you. And Councillor Shears, you said you had a follow-up?
Yeah, so could Angus and Perth Council be contacted to make a contribution, given that this new school will also remove strain on their education systems, as they currently have pupils that would have gone to the new school had it been there? So when the new school comes in, they will have less of a pupil base.
Okay, certainly we always work really closely with our partners in Angus and Perth and Conross, but Mrs May, is that something that is feasible or something that we would consider?
We've had different conversations. As you know, we work as a regional improvement collaborative across Dundee, Angus and Perth. Just now, that's not something we're having a discussion about, but we certainly have had many discussions of this like in the past. So there's no reason why we can't continue to work in partnership across Tayside Regional Improvement Collaborative.
Okay, thank you, Mrs May. And Councillor Scullen, you're next on the list.
Hi there, yeah. As a new councillor for the Lockie Ward, I just wanted to make a note of thanks to the community group at the Western Gateway for their work and commitment in bringing this forward and the tireless work of councillor Charles Malone and Michael Mara MSP. And it's just a shame that it hasn't happened sooner, but the Western Gateway Group have done amazing work to get it this far.
No, thank you for that. And as councillor Mara said in the chamber, when he was a councillor, you know, just over a year ago, obviously, you know, the community completely understood that if things got delayed for reasons out of the council's control, they would accept that. And I think that's what's happened. But thank you for your comments. Councillor Coleman?
Thanks again, Mr convener. The Western Gateway is welcome. And my questions around the proposed reduced catchment area for Adler Primary. Adler Primary will have a projected role of one hundred and fifteen this forthcoming academic year, starting in August, making it the smallest primary school in Dundee in terms of role with an opposite rate of forty-five percent. The draft paper at one point five point three states whilst over the time, there may be reduction of role for Adler Primary from session twenty-six, twenty-seven, the number of children attending the Western Gateway is not anticipated to have a significant or detrimental impact upon the school or its staffing. I do welcome that, however, there's no actual modelling to evidence that claim. I noticed in the report, I may have missed it, but could officers please reassure us that how that reassurance is evidenced? And I would just like to know if they considered at all looking at other boundaries of other schools in the Strathmart ward to compensate for the loss in the Adler Catchment Area, particularly given the adjacent Craigel Primary is one of the larger primary schools, you could maybe balance out the loss?
Yeah, no, I think I'll bring Mrs May in in a second, but clearly certainly when you look at Strathmart ward and obviously as a Strathmart ward member, I'm certainly very much aware of this, that we did look at the boundaries of the primary schools in Strathmart ward just a number of years ago. So we've already certainly well done that. And I think the reality is when you look at Adler Primary School and St Fergus, which is also the other catchment area for Western Gateway, I don't actually think many of the young people from the Western Gateway actually attend either school. I think it's very low numbers, but maybe Mrs May, you could confirm that?
Thanks again, convener, and thank you for the question, Councillor Coleman. And absolutely, convener, you've already really covered the point. It's very, very small numbers of children make their way up to Adler Primary School. I think we have one currently, and so we don't expect a huge impact. We have, I think, two pupils in St Fergus, just to cover that one off as well. So we don't expect a huge impact on Adler, but clearly we will continue to monitor that really closely. However, we do just now say that the children who are living in this catchment have an entitled place in Adler Primary School. So therefore, we need to include it as part of this work to re-look at the boundary there and the catchment area.
Thank you.
Well, it's okay. Thank you for that, Mr Coleman, Councillor Coleman. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Arlene?
Item five, Children and Family Service Plan, twenty-twenty-one to twenty-four. You have a report before you.
Again, the report's in front of you, so does anybody wish to come in? Councillor Shears, I see you put your hand up.
Thanks again, convener. On page seventy-seven, we can see that audited children's plans, judge good or better, are fifty percent under target and audited assessments, judge good or bad, twenty-five percent under target. And I can also see that formats are being simplified. But for me, those figures suggest a training or knowledge gaps, with additional training of staff also being looked at in order to get those numbers up to where they need to be.
Okay, again, pass over to Mrs May.
Thanks again, convener, and thanks for the question. Absolutely, we look at our data in terms of looking at workforce development all the time and professional learning needs. But I do have our head of children and justice social work on the call, Glenn. I don't know if Glenn wants to come in with some specifics around that. I'm sure he's here. If he's not here, I expected him to be here. So apologies if Glenn's not made it on, but yeah, the answer is, is he there? Yeah, there you are, Glenn, thank you. Just if you want to add.
Thank you, Audrey, and thank you for the question, Councillor Shears. And first of all, I would say that actually overall, the quality of our child's plans and assessments are improving within the service, and we know that from internal self-evaluation. And we're also confident about the accuracy of that internal self-evaluation because it's consistent with the recent care inspection of child protection. So we're confident of that. But equally, in terms of that child protection inspection, in terms of the staff survey that we carried out, survey across the workforce, we were hearing that staff still lacked confidence in developing outcome-focused or smart child plans. So yes, the answer is in response to that, we are working with learning workforce development to develop some bespoke training programmes for staff, both across children's social work and in fact across schools as well for the broader population of children and people.
Okay, are you happy with that, Councillor Shears?
Yeah, very happy, thank you.
Okay, so Glenn, you put your hand back up. Are you wanting to come back in? No, okay. Next one I have is Councillor Duncan.
Yeah, thanks, convener. It's more of an observation really on the report, there's a lot of good, interesting stuff in it. But can I just make the observation, it may just be me personally, but it's not very user-friendly. What I mean by that is if you have a look on page five of the report, that's page forty-six of these committee papers, and I could cite many, many other examples, there's an awful lot of like acronyms and GURFAC, there's DTTO, CPO, CJSW, that's just one page. Can I just make a plea that in future it be more, you know, friendway and plain English?
Yeah, no, happy to ask officers to look into that. Do selling children and families, we said you'll use a lot of acronyms and you're used to it all the time.
I'm easily befuddled, convener, so I'd appreciate that.
We can actually do that or put a glossary in the future so you're aware of that.
Exactly, that's exactly my point, thanks.
We'll do that in the future, thank you. Okay, Bailey McPherson, you're next. Thanks, convener. Actually, that's a good point Councillor Duncan made, because I felt that for a member of the public in particular, I think we can wade our way through and sort of work it out. But for a member of the public, the whole thing's incomprehensible, to be perfectly honest. And, you know, I think, you know, Plain English Society and all that, but that's not my point at all. Two questions. One is in relation to early learning and it's the statistic on page forty-nine of the substantive page numbers, where it's quite clear that in terms of the latest data, we're well done, although I fully accept it's twenty-one, twenty-two figure. Well, we're still in twenty-one, twenty-two, if we were talking about the academic year, I suppose, just. But the point I'm really making is we're well short of target in relation to the percentage of two-year-olds accessing early learning places. And I was wondering what reassurance officers are able to give in relation to, you know, really promotion and trying to increase that nearer to the target, which I think we're talking about difference between nineteen percent and twenty-seven percent, which is quite significant. Okay, Mrs May, I'll hand over to yourself.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to bring the chief education officer in on this one, if that's okay, convener, because I know that he's been having lots of discussions. But just in a very high-level response to that question, it is about parental choice as well, you know. But we do offer and we do give the opportunity, but there is still an element of parental choice in there. But I'll ask Paul Fleming to come in and talk about where we are with the targets, because we would do a bit of work about that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Miss May. Thank you, convener. Thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. To answer your question, yes, to give you assurance, myself and our senior managers, including the earlier years managers, had a meeting to discuss this update and to collect the targets in terms of informing our detailed action plan for this year. And we are looking to enhance that figure still, notwithstanding what Mrs May says around the parental choice. However, we want to make sure that we publicise with our partner providers and with our families the opportunities that accessing those places gives children and families.
Thanks for that. It's reassuring that the department's being proactive. I get the point about parental choice, but I would have assumed that's why the target's twenty-seven percent and not a hundred percent. The point fundamentally is that, you know, a target's been chosen, which strikes me as quite reasonable, given parental choice, you'll never get to, you know, the hundred percent type sort of situation. But nonetheless, it's good the department's been proactive and I'm grateful for that. Can I come on to my second question, which is on page seventy-nine? And it's the issue around the Mentors in Violence Prevention Programme and the fact that quite reasonably, it hasn't reached every one of our secondary schools yet. And I presume Covid's slightly got in the way of that and a whole lot of the other stuff as well. And I was just really wondering which schools have actually, has it been delivered in? Which are the four that it still requires to be done? And what's not very clear from this, although it's sort of halfway through in terms of progress, is that four of the eight have, you know, it's been delivered in. I suppose what's missing in that is what's the time scale for getting around the rest? Okay, Mrs May?
Well, I'm going to ask my chief education officer to confirm the schools. If we don't, we'll get back to you. Because right at this moment, I don't have them, I could guess. I know two of them and I could guess another two, but I don't want to do that, Bailey McPherson. But, yeah, and you're absolutely right, because this is an event that happens working with partners in schools, you know, Covid has put paid to quite a lot of these great opportunities and projects where we're bringing in external agencies to support young people. So the plan is to get this up and running this next school session. So from August onwards, we would be working on it, certainly part of our plan and our bigger health and wellbeing agenda. And certainly it sits along many other good projects like Our First Girls, that we're now moving into work with young men and boys and all of these agendas linked to targeting young people to support them, to avoid this pathway, if you like. So I don't know if Paul has got the name of the four schools?
Well, thank you, Audrey, and thanks again for the question, Bailey McPherson. I'm not committed to the four just now because I have Our First Girls in our mind. What I will say, Bailey McPherson, is I'll get that information to you. But just as an added, given your interest in the area, just want to say in terms of gender-based violence, we do have a number of programmes in place, such as Equally Safe at School, the Mentoring of Violence Prevention Programme, which you referred to, Our First Girls, which Mrs May refers to, the Cedar Project, and also Working with colleagues around improving the gender balance. And that's across our read schools. And so we would expect all of them to start everything at the same time, but we would have that programme. So I get that detail for you and share that with you.
That's greatly appreciated. I wasn't trying to put anybody on the spot there. The bottom line, you send it in due course, but it's good to see that you're across a range of programmes, again, proactivity on the part of the department and our schools, which is greatly appreciated. Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Next I have is Bailey Keenan.
Okay, thanks, convener. A couple of points or questions. On page fifty-six, school leavers achieving literacy and numeracy at level four seems to be three percentage points adrift of the target. I'm wondering how many pupils that equates to? The overall, further down that page, the overall average tariff score is over a hundred adrift. And what does that tell me? And then page seventy, the percentage of pupils with ASN gaining N4 higher with the latest targets, latest data of seventy-one percent, with target in ninety. And then we go on on that one to suggest that we're going to alter the target. So, you know, how many pupils is affected by being, you know, twenty percentage points down? And what we're looking to alter the target for?
Okay, I'll ask Mrs May to come in and answer that.
On mute.
Sorry, wee problem with my clicker on my laptop this evening. Sorry about that, folks. Thanks, convener, and thanks Bailey Keenan. If I could start in reverse order, because I have to say I am due an apology to committee tonight. Because if I start with the page seventy and the ASN gaining N4s up to higher, that's a mistake. It's a typo, the data transfer. We actually were doing some work on our data this morning at a meeting and we noticed that that should read eighty-seven percent. So that in fact is an error. It says seventy-one percent and we will need to reschedule this report when we look and check the rest of it. So we think we've had a wee issue with aversion control. And so we just discovered this today and so we've come to committee with the paper you already have in front of you. But that one, I can assure you, is eighty-seven percent, not seventy-one percent. And so the proposed new target, you'll see where we've got other data and there'll be a lot more data coming to committee in September around the wider attainment paper. And you'll see that where we're way ahead of some of our targets, we revisit the target. So that's the comment there, but the number's wrong. It should be eighty-seven percent and a target would be ninety percent, which is reasonable to increase it by another three percent year on year. So that's the explanation for that one. Sorry, Bailey Keenan, can I go back to your other ones? What page were you referring to?
Page fifty-six.
Fifty-six, thank you. Okay, sorry, it's a, it's a big, it's a big paper tonight. So page fifty six, you, you mentioned, um, the overall tariff score has come down. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, what, let me look at that. Okay, well, we've got, we've got, um, an upward trend in, in different parts. This is the high level, um, performance indicators, and we could break these down for you to show you, for example, that, um, in terms of, uh, uh, young people in, in quintile one, that there's, there's ongoing improvement in tariff scores. And in fact, the gaps are closing between a number of our measures. So I don't have an exact number for you has, in terms of percentage points, how many pupils that represents. But again, that's something happy to break down and get to you, um, and in fact, get that to, to all of the committee. But, um, the, the, the variation over the last year or two has been, you know, I don't want to use a Covid excuse, but I think we need to be honest that young people in the senior phase, having two years of no, um, traditional S Q examinations and assessment procedures, has had an impact on, on our, our results. And, but actually, if you look at the national database, you'll find that actually Dundee's results have not declined as much as many of the results nationally. So in some ways, we're actually still ahead. And of course, there's many ways to compare data and some of the ways we need to compare our data is against ourselves. And there is still an ongoing improving trend in terms of overall tariff scores. And in the tariff scores that are showing the difference between our children and young people who live in, um, S M D one and two and the rest of our population, and that gap is closing in particular in literacy and numeracy, which of course are part of our national targets around Scottish attainment challenge. So, um, I can get details for you if you need more figures, um, but just now, um, yeah, there's, there's a variety of real improvements. Um, and you will see that coming with, um, our attainment report in September. So we have an overall score in Dundee of tariff points, including we've got an improved, um, destinations and our P one, P four and P seven C F E results are all improving and are beyond national average now, which of course was not the picture a few years ago. So there's, there's lots of improvements, um, to be celebrated amongst course scores that we need to look at and, and understand and dig deeper.
I'll bring you back in.
Just that I've made a call, I'm happy to receive that, uh, further detail, you know, uh, in some comparison to what is three percent meaning pupils terms. And, you know, I think it would be useful if officers identify an issue within the paper at an early stage in the day or, or, or even at a late stage, that, that they bring forward an amendment to that paper. You know, it would just save the question in about a time one evening.
Okay, thank you.
Not fully accept that. Um, so next person I have is Mrs McBean. Okay, Mrs McBean, I did see you there earlier on, are you?
Sorry, I'm muted.
You're kind of pointing us absolutely fine, on you go.
Thank you, convener. I'm saying councillor Duncan kind of preempted me. Um, I found that report as somebody fairly new to the committee, a fantastic overview of what was going on. Um, but I found the acronyms were driving me daft and I obviously had a bit of extra time yesterday because there were over a hundred of them. And between the ones that were explained and the ones I knew personally, I'm still left with almost half that I didn't know. Your idea of a glossary would be fantastic, pardon me, um, for most of the papers, but that's, thank you.
No.
I'm not the only, councillor Duncan and I are not the only ones struggling.
No, absolutely accept that. As, as Mrs May said, sometimes when you're, you're just used to it all the time, you just, you don't think about what other people might be able to read it or not. So we will certainly do that in the future, but we'll make sure that happens in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I have councillor Shaw, after that I have councillor Rome, and after that I won't take any more coming in. So these are the last two contributions. So councillor Shaw.
Okay, thank you. Um, mine was really just a comment about this report. Um, it was the first of April twenty sixteen when children and families first came into existence. And I think at one point at scrutiny, I did ask if it made it easier having, um, children and families under the one umbrella. Um, and a report that like this, six years later, you see how important it is that, um, primary interventions and supporting families at a very early level and is just so incredibly useful as we progress through, um, our lives. And I'd just like to pay tribute to everybody who's involved in that whole, um, sort of, um, delivery. And sometimes some of the things that we do aren't headlines in the paper and they aren't, um, conversations all over the street because they're the very discreet ones where we ask questions and then I always feel really, um, privileged to learn that the team's already on it and the family are already, um, got a major wraparound and that, um, I don't need to be nervous because there's people actually overlooking and, and supporting families from a very early age so that, so that we don't have a future where we see for always, um, uh, just, just repeats and we can use systems and procedures to help support people and, and, and make futures more positive. So I can, can I just say, I, I'm hoping that children and families and, and this reiteration will continue uh, for a long time because I think for a city like Dundee is a very important way of delivering the services that we do. Um, and, and that, that's probably a, a plethora wider audience than the audience that's sitting here, but that would certainly be my hopes.
No, thank you for that. Those comments are certainly very much appreciated. And certainly I think the work that the, the whole service does joined up together has made a huge difference for the young people and their families in the city. So thank you for your comments. So as I said, the final contribution on this item will be from councillor Rome.
Uh, thank you for that, convener. Um, I just wanted to say before I asked my question, I absolutely agree with councillor Shaw and Margaret McBean that there's a lot of information, uh, in this report and it's, it's very useful. Um, and I, I, I agree on the acronym point as well. It's something I brought up when I, when I was first elected. But I, I totally understand how it creeps back in. There's so much new stuff that gets added, but I, I think that would be really useful to have that glossary. Um, however, my question was about pages sixty four and sixty five, the lunchtime experience in secondary school. Uh, with other hat on, as I represented the T side contracts, I'm already aware that this is an issue, uh, and of the work that's been done from that side to address it, um, just in terms of the, the focus group with young people. But there is reference to a report coming to the Dundee partnership, uh, and the very last paragraph talks about, um, the fact that only fifty percent available children for free school meals are taking them up, uh, which is extremely worrying, uh, given that we're in a cost of living crisis. So I'm just wondering if there's a timeline for, for when this report's going to go to the partnership? Because obviously the sooner that we can boost those numbers of people that are, are aware of, of their right to free school meal, the better.
Okay, Mrs May, I'll hand over to yourself.
Thanks, convener, and thanks councillor Rome. It's really, you're right, it's a really, really important area for us. And in particular, when we, we find out that so many of our children are young people are not taking up the free school meals that they're entitled to and, and are granted. And so there's, has been a piece of work, again, it's been halted slightly by the last couple of years because it started, um, pre-pandemic, looking at the data, looking at where we would, um, find it better, not just, just take data, but actually go and talk to children, talk to young people, talk to parents and listen, not, not talk, obviously, listen to what they had to say and get that feedback. So we've been doing some work through our healthy, um, our healthy weight strategy and our, our targeted, um, health and wellbeing work through the RIC as well. So we're also working really closely with T side contracts. So we're at a point of pulling all that information together. So, so I don't have the exact date of the next meeting of the Dundee partnership, but my understanding is this coming within the next month or so to yourselves. So probably again after the summer, um, because people have been working on this for some time and we picked up the pace again when we've, we've tried to get, um, more, more visits into schools and more focus groups of young people, as you, as you rightly refer to. So there's been, there's been ongoing work to try and pick up the pace on this. And, and then look at, well, what else can we do? What, what might we do differently? And for young people, because it's not always about the food. Sometimes it is, but sometimes it is about that experience in a, a dining hall with queues and, you know, just all of the, the things that go alongside that. And then shops on the doorstep, who are, although we're given free food, some of the shops are given very cheap food. And so, uh, it may, and, you know, we could all have, um, a view as to the quality of that. Um, but, but sometimes children vote with their feet. And so we're really trying to, to have that bigger discussion about what would make the difference.
I'm grateful for that answer, Mrs May, if I can just reply to that, convener, and, uh, aware that in the urban areas, it is more difficult, there's more choice for children, uh, more unhealthy choice for children, I should say. But, um, I'm, I'm glad it's going to come to the partnership as soon as possible, um, after the holidays, because as soon as we get that knowledge to people of their entitlement, uh, to free school meals, the better. Thank you.
Okay, so as I said, that's the last contribution. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Arlene.
Item six, admission arrangements for children starting primary one. This was dealt with as an urgent matter and is for noting.
Okay, I think as Arlene said, that's just for noting, so, uh, just note that. And with that, I think that's all the items for children and families. So thank you all very much. Sorry, apologies, councillor Kruichshag, I didn't see you had your hand up there. On you go.
Thank you, convener. Um, just to say, uh, you know, how, how much I welcome this report. Um, you know, and it's a long time coming. It's something I've advocated, uh, for a long time. And, uh, I just wanted to, uh, chime in with my appreciation. Uh, it's something I've championed for many years now. Uh, as a solution to make life easier for families. I'm delighted to see this happening at last. Thank you.
No, thank you for that, councillor Kruichshag, that, that's appreciated. Um, as I said, that really was for noting, so, um, that item is noted and uh, yeah, that is the last thing for agenda, of this agenda. So thank you all very much for taking part in children and families tonight.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the City Development Committee.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to City Development. Uh, Arlene, can I hand over to yourself, please?
Yeah. Um, item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I see Bailey Sawyer's, what's the declaration? Bill Sawyer's?
Thanks, convener. Um, I, in terms of report number four in the committee, I live in one of the areas that will benefit from the the measures being taken, but it's obviously non-financial interest.
Thank you for that and thanks for my attention. Uh, councillor Shears, please.
Yeah, it's in relation to item eight, there's a lot of mentions of B T, the new office and their statutory undertaker performance. Um, I'm an employee of B T, however, I don't feel I need to remove myself as there is nothing to be voted on that I can see. It's just for transparency.
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks for bringing that to attention. I think I would agree with you as well. Uh, there's no other decorations, so we can move on. Arlene, please.
Item two, Civic Government Scotland Act nineteen eighty-two, street names, new residential development at site of the former St Columbus Primary School and the new residential development at site of former Downfield Primary School. These are for approval.
As I say, just a few street names for this former St Columbus, Downfield Gardens and for the former Downfield New Tile Lane. Anybody, any comments or questions? I don't see any, so we'll take that as agreed. Thank you, please. Uh, next, Arlene, please.
Item three, Dundee City Council, Craigill Road, Dundee, stopping up order twenty twenty-two. This is for approval.
Again, quite straightforward, another stopping up orders for what's to be done? No comments, questions? Nope, we'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much.
Item four, Dykes of Gray, Clever House and Craigie Bank, twenty mile per hour zones, order twenty twenty-two. This is for approval.
Again, just locations for identified twenty mile an hour destruction zones and annual road safety report presented to City Development on the sixth of September twenty twenty-one. So we're actually looking to restrict roads in Dykes of Gray, Clever House and Craigie Bank areas of the city. Councillor Coleman, have a question?
Thank you, Mr convener. Um, with regard to appendix B, as, as one of the newly elected members, can I ask officers to confirm what future proposals there will be in the coming years for twenty mile zones? What the process is for nomination of an area and how different proposals are weighted by priority? The number of parts of Strathmart and Ward, um, that residents have said to me would benefit from twenty mile zones, including parts of Adler, Kirkton, Clough Woods and Craigill and so on. So I would be grateful if officers could explain the process, um, not to the benefit of I, but perhaps other newly elected members. Um, the way that roads proposed are actually chosen. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. It comes from an annual, uh, road safety report and I think I'll bring in Mr McNorton and possibly provide some information for you. Other members, Ewan?
Thank you, convener, and thanks for the question, councillor Coleman. The, um, the policy for twenty mile an hour, um, process was, um, approved back in two thousand and sixteen. Um, essentially, what it is around is by keeping, uh, principal roads, um, so predominantly A, B and C class roads as, um, thirty mile an hour or higher, uh, speed limit, depending on the type of road, and residential roads, um, as being suitable for, for twenty mile an hour. The further programme for, um, twenty mile an hour sites is going to be brought forward, um, to the next committee, fifth of September. Um, that features as part of our road safety, uh, annual report. Um, and again, the, the last one where these sites originated from, um, featured in last September's annual road safety report as well. Um, essentially what it will list is all the roads and we're tackling them, um, if you like, uh, with a view to making them all twenty mile an hour. Um, roads that are appropriate to be twenty mile an hour, twenty mile an hour. So, uh, we're working through a, a system of doing that at the moment.
Councillor Coleman, yeah, can I come back?
That's fine, thank you, Mr convener.
Right, thank you. Uh, sorry, councillor Shaw, I see you put your hand up.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I did my hand instead of putting question. Sorry, um, convener. Um, uh, so basically, it was, it was just an observation that, um, it's good that, um, the Dykes of Gray are being done, but isn't it very positive that now, when we do new developments, it automatically starts at the twenty per miles an hour as the kind of status? And, and it, it kind of le- leaves us not having to go retrospectively looking at these areas. So, um, positive that that came in a few years ago and, uh, hopefully it won't be long until, um, bits of, um, green leafy Maryfield between the school and desk will hit that as well. Thank you.
No, thank you. I agree. It's actually a positive for new developments for this to be done as a standard. I think that's only correct. And, uh, I'm sure I'll leave it to the officers to go around the rest of the city and, uh, get touch on each of the words. Thank you. Uh, no other questions. So I'll take that as agreed. Next, please, Arlene. Thank you.
Item five, disabled persons parking places. This is for approval.
This is simply to seek approval from the T R variation order to either remove disabled parking bays for the disabled persons on street parking order. Uh, there's a number of, uh, new bays to be added and some to be removed for various reasons. Any questions or comments? I don't see any, so I'll take that as agreed as well. So thanks very much. Can we move on, please, Arlene?
Item six, tenders received by head of design and property. This is for approval.
Uh, thank you. This item seeks approval to accept thirteen tenders totaling just short of four million pounds for work across the city, including essential maintenance in schools which must take place but into the summer holidays and installation of photovoltaic panels on four sites to reduce the council's carbon emissions and reduce our energy costs. Members also note it's the final phase of the investment to remove low carbon steel pipe work from Dundee House, chill water supply, fall in the heating system, which is currently on site. This concludes the removal of the pipe work from Dundee House in its entirety. I see Billy McPherson, I think you were first.
Thanks, convener. And this, in, in, in fact, in relation to the ma- matter that you mentioned latterly there in relation to the, uh, thin walled carbon steel pipes. Um, of, obviously, this is just part of what I think we agreed back in March, which was a total of one point two million. And given that, obviously, the tenders, this is obviously in relation to the chilled, uh, water pipe work and obviously there's the heating pipe work and the replacement radiators as well, I presume. And, um, I was just really wondering if officers can give us a reassurance that if we put all the tenders together, it comes to the sort of level of expenditure that committee, um, agreed to back in March.
Thank you for that. Um, Mr Martin, are you on the call?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Uh, in, in terms of the tender back in March, that was for the substantive heating works, Bailey McPherson. And this, this, uh, number today is specifically to deal with, uh, chilled water that, uh, supplies the mechanical services. So, uh, you would add the two together for the total.
Thank you. Billy McPherson, would you like to come back?
Yeah, happy with that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Bailey Keenan, I see you next. I think just, uh, it'd be useful, uh, that my question was very similar to, uh, Bailey McPherson, so it's kind of answered the additional work. It would be useful to have a, a running tally of what's been spent on Dundee House, uh, just for the point of view of, you know, uh, I want, uh, one point two million, I think, and this is takes up another best part of three hundred thousand. So it'd be useful to have that if officers could provide it later. The other thing I'd like to welcome was, obviously, for photovoltaic panels, I think reducing the city's carbon footprint by the use of these is, uh, uh, a, a particularly good way forward. And I'd like to see more of these type of projects coming forward. Yeah, thank you for that. I'm sure the officers will forward on the details you have asked for regards to the Dundee House. And I totally agree with your views on the climate action plan we've actually got in place and the new, uh, I'm sorry, installation of P visas or U P visas, as I said, the correct way to go in reducing our carbon footprint. So thanks for your comments. of PVs or UPVs is actually the correct way to go in reducing our carbon footprint. So thanks for your comments. I have, Council Duncan, next, please.
Thanks, Convenor. It's just a quick question. Page nineteen, around the proposed works on the McKinnon Centre. Just to get a wee bit of quality, there's going to be works carried out to five rooms and I see that the NHS are going to pay for three of these rooms, the work to be done in them. Now, I'm going to assume that that's because the work on the other two rooms won't be for the NHS. But I just want a wee bit of quality on that and also who's going to pay for the work on the other two of those.
Okay, Mr. Martin, would you come back, please?
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks for the question, Council Duncan. Yeah, you're quite correct. The works associated with the GP surgeries is funded wholly by the NHS and we're taking the opportunity to do a wee bit of other work associated with that around the two stores.
So aren't you asking, Council Duncan?
No, that's great. I just wanted to quantify that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Council Short, please.
Again, it's just to focus on the positive things. Being a regular visitor these days to Clippington Primary School, it reminds me a bit of Ankrum Primary School where my own bear went. And yeah, it's very much one of the older style schools and they certainly built them to last in those days, didn't they? But it's good to see that there's a good bit of investment going into there. So I appreciate that, Mr. Martin. And I'm sure that our colleagues in Children and Family Service will appreciate it as well. And also, I guess it's really important that we make note of the fact that you've got quite a bit of tender in there with regards to active travel and going forward and looking at that future for those bearings that hopefully will have one with them because there's a lot of investment here looking at the future and concentrating on our climate. As Bailey Keenan said, looking at that reduction in our carbon footprint isn't just what we have in the way of buildings across the city, but it's how we can influence and having an effect on the people and the way that they travel across the city. So well done, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you.
No, thanks very much for that. I think it should be noted that the two tenders demonstrating the commitment that the council have to the act of travel. And I'd love to thank Sustrans for funding the act of travel corridor from Broi Ferry, sorry, to Monyfeet. And also the consultancy work planned for the Cooper Angus Lockey Road corridor. So yeah, certainly take that on board. Thank you very much. Next one, please, Arlene.
Item seven, future approach to Dundee firework displays. You have a report before you.
Yeah, thank you very much. But I think before we start off, I think I'll bring Mr. Hamilton in actually, just to give a bit of background to this initially. And the rationale for the report as is at the moment. Mr. Hamilton, are you?
Thank you, Convenor. And members will have read the report and realise that the the report is really a reflection of the duties that are coming to all public bodies across the UK and they're called the protect duty. And this is a response to the Manchester Arena terrorist attack amongst other events. And it has caused the UK government to propose legislation that places a duty on bodies that are organising events which will attract a significant number of members of the public to reflect upon their safety in the event of a terrorist attack. Obviously, the council in planning for the fireworks event is wanting to take account of the most up to date legislation and guidance that exists. So an assessment has been done of the suitability of both Lockey Park and Baxter Park in relation to this new protect duty. And one of the measures that the protect duty will impose upon councils is to conduct a vulnerability assessment of event spaces. And as the report highlights, when that vulnerability assessment was undertaken of Baxter Park, the nature of Baxter Park with the walls with the railings, a number of exits which are relatively narrow in nature. And that led to an assessment of how members of the public would be able to exit the park in the event of an incident. And there are calculations that were undertaken to reflect on the speed with which a crowd would be able to exit the park, taking into account the the fact that the displays happen in hours of darkness and they're very much a family event with children in buggies often attending. And that led to significant concerns regarding the speed with which an evacuation could be conducted. And that assessment was undertaken by council colleagues from a range of services along with Police Scotland, the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service and the Scottish Ambulance Service. And it effectively concluded that Baxter Park is no longer a suitable venue for a free, unticketed firework display, as has been the case in previous years. As a consequence of that, officers looked at alternative open spaces within the city to determine whether another site that could serve mainly the eastern half of Dundee would be appropriate. It's very difficult, given the nature of some of the open spaces in Dundee, to host an event of this nature. And most areas were discounted. One which we did look at a little bit further was Dawson Park. So it suffers from some of the same concerns about Baxter Park. There is a fence that surrounds the majority of the park and if that was to be a venue, then a part of that fence would need to be removed for the duration of the fireworks event. There are also some concerns about the impact of traffic. So parking and traffic movements, particularly along the A ninety-two Arbroath Road, the impact upon the residential amenity of those that surround the park and also the artificial playing surface that exists there that would need to be protected from firework displays. And so for those reasons, the report is recommending that the city stops hosting free public fireworks displays and that the budget that was there to support these events is allocated to other events elsewhere in the city. And I think we've identified that the winter festivals, so Christmas and the events leading up to Christmas, we would look to do more if the money was reallocated for that purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. That's really quite in depth. I know all members will be saddened that the displays cannot be restored after absence since twenty nineteen due to Covid. But I believe that public safety must be paramount and the advice regarding Baxter Park and other locations just we mentioned is quite clear. And implications for the city as a whole was outlined within the report. Bailey McPherson, you're first, please.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. And I'm grateful to Mr. Hamilton, but I think we all get that aspect. But I have a few concerns about what's before us tonight and it is the intention of myself, seconded by Councilor Coleman, to move an amendment in relation to that. And it's with that amendment that I've got a question for officers. When?
Sorry, Billy McPherson. Could I maybe just get the amendment put out first whilst you're speaking?
Yes, surely, surely. We're not quite in the formal position, but I have no problem with being circulated. The point I really make, Convenor, is that in putting forward the draft amendment to Mr. Many for officers to look at the competence, he did say that, because we want a further report on two particular aspects before a final decision is taken. And he said to us that if we bring that back to the next committee, which is the fifth of September, and we were then minded to move forward with the fireworks display, we'd be too late in the day. And I can sort of understand that, which sort of begs the question I'm going to ask now. And we've altered that amendment to say, or the recess subcommittee as the means of getting round that. But the point I ask of officers at the moment is we're all aware of the months of planning that events, big public events like this take to in order to put into place. Why? Why is this report coming to us now on the twenty seventh of June, the last committee before the recess? And why wasn't it, you know, obviously, the fallout from the terrible events at the Manchester Arena and other concerns that have led to the UK government bringing in the the sort of changes that, you know, are perfectly reasonable, I think we'd all agree are perfectly reasonable, have been known for some time. I'm just really wondering why this report's coming forward in June and not perhaps February or March?
Yeah, I'll go back to Mr. Hamilton, but I think obviously there's time is very important and the fact of our election, a pre-election period. And I think you're pointing out probably earlier than that, we should probably put officers under probably more stress and time scales. But I'll bring Mr. Hamilton with regards to the timings.
Thank you, Convenor. There is a cycle of event planning that takes place throughout the year. And it's generally in the springtime that we start to look at the event planning for the fifth of November. And obviously, when that commends this year, the review that we've undertaken is part of an assessment that we do for all major events. So it's not unique to the fireworks displays. It highlighted the issues that I've described earlier and there's been quite a bit of work that has been undertaken. First of all, to reaffirm that Baxter Park would not be suitable. We considered, is there an alternative way of approaching a fireworks display, including the option of a ticketed approach rather than a free entry to everyone? That took some time. It was discounted because I think there was a feeling that people who have attended for many years a free unticketed display would still turn up and that could cause problems on the surrounding road network. We then turned attention to looking at alternative venues within the city and that took some time. And then I think we got to the point where the last committee that took place prior to the elections, well, on twenty sixth of April, we were unable to report at that time. And this is the first committee of the City Development, our first meeting of the City Development Committee since that time. So I think recognise that it's not ideal timing and the difficulties in actually procuring and then delivering an event. But I think for hopefully the reasons I've explained, we couldn't bring a report forward in advance of this because the information was still being worked through.
Yeah, thanks for that. I would agree with the point that it's less than ideal. But as I say, I will be bringing forward an amendment. I'm grateful to officers for circulating. And obviously, after the questions are out, the way I'll speak to that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll bring you back in later. Thanks very much. Billy Scott, please.
Thanks, Convenor. The question I wanted to ask, I think, is covered in the amendment that's been proposed by Bailey McPherson. The fireworks display has been cancelled for safety concerns, but then that's going to create additional safety concerns as more people have home firework displays. So I just wondered what actions the council intends to take to try and mitigate those additional safety concerns that might arise. Another question I have is that I note in the report that it says that procurement process couldn't be undertaken in time to deliver the events on the fifth of November. And that's why it's not being done in two thousand and twenty-two. So if there's a desire at some future date to bring back a firework display, would Dawson Park was put forward as an alternative? Will the local members and the community council and the community planning partnerships be consulted in whatever area you intend to bring it in to make sure that there's the support of the local community?
Mr. Hamilton, would you like to come back now?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor, and thank you, Billy Scott. On the question of mitigation, I think we all recognise that the fifth of November is a busy time with or without public fireworks displays for particularly the Fire and Rescue Service. I think when there has been public fire displays, there are often incidents throughout the city. So it's a busy night for fire colleagues. And over the last two years, because of pandemic, there have not been public displays. And I think the feedback that we've had through the event planning process from fire colleagues is that the situation has not been markedly worse because of that, although it's still a busy evening. I mentioned earlier that police and fire colleagues were both involved in the process of assessing the suitability of the parks for fireworks displays and are aware that the council may move to not host a public display this year. And there's been no pushback from colleagues that that would lead to an increase in incidents. Certainly in terms of mitigation, there's a regular bonfire safety campaign that is undertaken by council colleagues along with those from the emergency services and that would be, again, what would happen this year. I think it's also worth noting that there have been changes to legislation regarding the sale of fireworks and further legislation is currently going through the Scottish Parliament, which will restrict sales further and will require a licence. Now, that probably won't change things for this November, but it may mean that in future some of the concerns about the unauthorised and unsafe launching of fireworks will be mitigated. In relation to the second question, Bailey Scott, certainly if there is any proposal to explore a new venue for fireworks displays in the future, it would be important that we engage with all relevant stakeholders, particularly those who are local to whichever site is chosen. So yes, that would be the case.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Billy Scott, would you like to come back?
No, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Council McHugh, please.
Thank you. I note the content of the report and assume that any legislation relating to the protect duty will apply to other areas of the city where public events take place. Slicer Gardens, Camperdown Park, perhaps officers can confirm that a similar review will be carried out on other locations. I also note the recommendation that the council ceases to hold public firework displays due to site constraints. The report concludes, however, that while Baxter Park lacks emergency exiting capacity for the numbers attending, there are no significant issues for Lockey Park or Dawson Park. Why then is the recommendation to cease public fireworks displays altogether? When it would appear that only real problems for twenty twenty-two are capacity at Lockey Park as the sole fireworks display and the limited time scale for the necessary planning and procurement processes related to the proposed Dawson Park location? There will be time to make these arrangements for twenty twenty-three. Can we have an assurance then that officers and partners will conduct a proper risk assessment for each of these locations to allow fireworks displays to recommence in twenty twenty-three? There is no clear justification or rationale in this report for cancelling fireworks displays permanently. These events are enjoyed by many thousands of families annually and I would urge everyone to think very carefully before agreeing to do so.
Thank you for that. And I think it's actually quite clear in the report and what Mr. Hamilton's already stated exactly why the proposal is as it is for the future approach. But I'll bring Mr. Hamilton back in to touch on some of their questions.
Thank you, Convenor. Certainly in relation to Council McHugh's first point, that assessment of the suitability of any venue for a mass gathering of people will be undertaken. It is not unique to the fireworks display. So I can give that assurance. In relation to fireworks displays this year, one of the options that was considered when Baxter Park was ruled out was whether a single display in Lockey Park would be possible. I think the report notes that it's somewhere in the region of twenty to twenty-five thousand people that attend each of the displays. And whilst Lockey Park doesn't suffer the same physical constraints that Baxter Park does because the railings don't exist on top of the wall and the wall is therefore relatively easy for most people to climb. The assessment did highlight a concern that if you had potentially all of the people who had attended the two displays, all gathering in Lockey Park, there would be a capacity constraint there. Similarly, there would be a significant increase in the amount of traffic visiting the site. I think we all appreciate that the roads around both Baxter Park and Lockey Park are very busy on the nights. But if there was to be a single display, it's likely that that would lead to significant concerns around the road network around about Lockey Park. So for those reasons, a single display at Lockey Park was discounted. And I think police, fire and council colleagues would all agree that that wouldn't be a suitable approach in the future. Certainly, if we are to look at restarting public fireworks displays in twenty twenty-three, we would need to do a rigorous assessment of the spaces that we would propose to host. And as I mentioned in relation to Bailey Scott, that would include consulting with stakeholders surrounding the areas. And I think that's a decision. But certainly, for twenty twenty-two, I think for the reasons that are highlighted in the report, it's recommended that we don't do something, decisions relating to future years. I think we have time to plan for that. And that's a decision that we can respond to when we get guidance on what to do there.
Council McHugh, would you like to come back?
Yes, just to say, I'm somewhat reassured that there is, you have opened up the possibility of us considering fireworks displays in future years. It's not a closed door, that one. That was the reassurance I was looking for.
That's fine. Thank you. So it's all based on the protect guidance as well and any legislation that might come in in the forthcoming months and years. Council Duncan, I have you next, please.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Yeah, I mean, I take some heart, but you know,
Yeah, thanks, convenor. Yep, I mean, I take some heart, but you know, the, as councillor McHugh's just said, that the door's not entirely closed, one hopes to restoring firework displays that have been something of a tradition in Dundee for many a year. My question really is that, you know, safety is safety, as it were. Baxter Park, in addition to holding firework displays, is also hosts, you know, other attractions such as, but not only the Weedy Boys of Bangkok, et cetera. I'm just wondering, do the people involved with that show and other shows, should they be concerned about these so-called safety concerns? Or how confident can they be that they can go ahead in future years?
Yeah, I think Mr. Hamilton's touched on that with the previous response, but I'll let him come back again, just to reaffirm.
Convenor, yes, it is the case that the protect duty will apply not just to local authorities, but to all those who are organising events with significant numbers of people attending. I think I would provide further reassurance to councillor Duncan that each event goes through a safety advisory group process where the the plans in relation to the safety of those attending the event are scrutinised by council and emergency services colleagues. What I would say is that the event that councillor Duncan mentioned has a significantly lower number of people attending and is unlikely to raise the same concerns as the firework displays, but each venue and each event is assessed for its safety and the protect duty applies not just to the events that we're discussing tonight, but all major events.
I'm glad of that qualification because, I mean, it shouldn't be one rule for one activity and, you know, not for the others. So thanks for that.
Thank you for that. It's quite clear. I think we're actually addressing every venue and every event that might happen across the city for public use. Councillor Short, please.
Thank you, convenor. That was my angle, but not so much the organisations that might look to have tickets and make profit, but more organisations that are doing it from a community angle. A few of us were at Westfest a couple of Sundays ago and I would imagine that the people of Westfest are now sitting around the table going, right, how do we top that? And what kind of conversations, Gregor, are you having with various community organisations across the city to make sure that they are not in a position that they fall foul of this as well? Because I think that would be quite disappointing if they weren't aware. Because I'm sure they're not watching this on a Monday night, not when Carnation Street is coming on.
Thank you, convenor. I would say I mentioned the safety advisory group process in relation to the previous question. Community events like Westfest go through that same process. And that involves council colleagues that will ensure that the right things are considered by community groups and the best advice is given to make sure that events happen in a safe, safe manner.
Okay, councillor Short?
Yeah, it was just, just to establish, because if I was booking an event, I'd do my homework to get everything organised to then come to you with something which was much more rounded. And then I might be falling on my face if you tell me that, oh, that falls by the wayside because of protect. So can we kind of endeavour to make sure that all of the community organisations and community officers are actually aware of this so that that information is going out there now rather than down the line? As I say, there's nothing worse than finding something out when you've gone way halfway down the journey. Please.
I'm sure councillor, sorry, Mr. Hamilton and the other, the events team, well, and the SAG will certainly be doing that across the community and the rest of the city. I have councillor Shear as, and Bailey Keenan left and that'll be the last question. So councillor Shears, please.
Thanks, convenor. Mr. Hamilton, you mentioned, or the police didn't mention there were any additional incidents when we didn't have fireworks on, but did fire and rescue and police make reference to the events in Kirkton last year? When they were literally chased from the streets and due to an unauthorized bonfire that required their presence? Because to me, that's a significant safety concern where if we're not having official events, people are going to go out onto the street and do these big community events. And as we saw, they can't be policed. They were literally chased from the streets. So did they make any mention to that?
Mr. Hamilton?
Convenor, the colleagues from the emergency services that are involved in the event planning meetings were aware of the incidents in Kirkton and that was taken into consideration in the comments that were provided to council officers.
Yeah, thank you for that. And there's also the reports coming back from community safety, public protection, where the police and the fire service will do their regular reports as per the other week there when they were here in front of committee. Would you like to come back, Mr. Councillor Shears?
That's answering my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bailey Keenan, please.
Yeah, I mean, extremely disappointed that we'll bring forward this proposal and probably minded at this stage to probably support the Lib Dems motion. But we've yet to see the motion that the administration are going to bring forward. So that'll be of interest. Fifty thousand people attend it. A third, a third of the city's population believe that the firework display is something that they should attend. You know, I really have fear for people buying fireworks, letting them off in their back garden and children being hurt. And we'll all get complaints about the numbers of fireworks that are getting set off in the streets. The disruption that that causes, the amount of people that are worried about pets. I mean, young lads firing squibs at each other, launching rockets at each other in the street. You know, if it just encourages any more of that, then we've got a real problem. You know, I noticed that Drumgeef Park is ruled out. You know, we're looking to put the whole event in Drumgeef Park when we've got a vacant site directly across the road from it at the moment. But we have school site that's not occupied in any way at all. So, you know, the old Saint Xavier's site could have been the site of the bonfire and the fireworks. We Drumgeef Park used for the public to stand in and look at it. Because that's what we tend to turn up to do. I mean, I think it's really disappointing that a third of the population is let down because of this. You know, it might have been the case we are a bit better planning that there'd be three events in the city, be fifteen thousand or something at a time, you know, or thereabouts. And in which case, we could have managed the thing better than just a, here it is at late stage, let's not bother. And it's really, really disappointing.
No, thanks very much for taking on, taking on all your comments. Moving on, we, sorry, I said that was the last question, but councillor Alexander has a comment. So have you? May I come in, councillor Alexander?
Thanks very much, convenor. I suppose it's just to articulate a couple of points. So I think what we're hearing on this call is very much reflected in the public narrative. So God love him, I've read the comments on the Courier, the Tilly Facebook pages, my own Facebook page, when I referenced this and many other comments that have come in. And it's fair to say there is a significant amount of disappointment. There's also a significant amount of elation. And there's also a significant amount of mixed views on the proposal that's before us today. And that's for a number of reasons, I think. I'm also very minded that later on during P and R, we'll be considering another report on resources spending review. And there are a couple of issues that I think are kind of competing in my head. So yes, I accept and I agree with the comments that have been made around the significance of the event and how many people attend it and how many people enjoy that event. We're living in a cost of living crisis. We're about to consider a report that sets out huge financial challenges. And we are literally talking about an event where we put fifty thousand pounds and set it on fire for a fifteen minute display. That's the reality of what we're discussing tonight. So I understand, I agree, I get all of the other issues that are being discussed, but there is essentially at the base of this argument for me about can we deploy that a level of funding to better use for the economy and to support individuals in our city? And if the answer is not yes, then I'm sorry, but that isn't acceptable. Because there are no economic benefits to firework displays other than was rightly pointed out to me for the bus company locally in Dundee. There is no overspill effect. There is no material benefit to the wider city or to the individuals that councillor Bailey Keenan, sorry, rightly references. So the question in my mind is how do we better reflect the needs of the communities that we represent? I don't think people would support me setting fire to fifty thousand pounds in City Square, for example. And that's essentially what we're doing. Now, I get that it's bigger than that in terms of the experience that people have. But we are literally spending fifty grand on fireworks, which is a fifteen minute affair. And I just think there's a better way of deploying that resource. This is the right time to perhaps look at things afresh. Now, with all that said, I also readily accept that there might be other opportunities that arise in coming years that might be of greater benefit to the city. I referenced one of them in a recent Facebook post, which was using drones, for example. So I think there's options to consider, but we also need to look at the lens of what we're all wrestling with right now. I think what's in the best short term, at least, response to the city, given the challenges that are upon us. And I think investing that fund, those funds in Christmas, for example, which will have a benefit to local businesses and ergo jobs in the city is probably at this stage far better use of public money than spending fifteen, fifty thousand pounds on a fifteen minute display. Thanks, convenor.
No, thank you for your comments, councillor Alexander. Moving to Bailey McPherson with your amendment.
Thanks very much, convenor. And as members will have seen, there's sort of two aspects to this. We understand completely everything that Mr. Hamilton's had to say. And obviously, health and safety is obviously vitally important for all of our citizens. So we're not suggesting that this report is rejected. What we are saying, however, is that before it is agreed, there are a couple of things that really have to happen, which aren't and are missing from this report. Now, my colleague councillor Coleman, who will second me, will say a little bit more about the whole area of a formal risk assessment. Because we've had the risk assessment in relation to the sites and the provision of the actual fireworks by the city council. We've not had any, is any risk assessment about the knock-on effect on communities. And in a way, as alluded to by councillor Shears in relation to the knock-on effects potentially in communities, which could exacerbate incidents that we've had in the past. So that's sort of point one. But councillor Coleman will expand upon that. What I would really like to see, and I think it's a little bit disappointing that it's missing in this report. Now, I heard what councillor Alexander had to say there in relation to, you know, putting fifty thousand pounds worth of fireworks in the air. The reality, though, is it's an enjoyable night out for thousands and thousands of Dundee citizens and has been for many, many years. Now, I fully accept, because I've, we don't do it now, but we used to, as part of the West End Christmas fortnight, have a fireworks display. And you'll always get the jury out on it because whilst it was hugely well received and accepted by the public, you'll always get somebody who tells you that their pet was frightened and so on. There's a lot to be said for silent fireworks, which I believe the Italians are really into. But anyway, that's by the by. The point I make really is it's about community cohesion. And in a, I'm referencing the whole point about cost of living crisis. And there are a great many families in this city who don't get to events unless they are free. And this was one of the, or two of the really large scale free events for families across the city to attend. Now, there is a, and I have to say, it's a rather vague commitment about covering, using the fifty thousand pounds in relation to our Christmas events, but it's very, very vague. It makes no firm commitment. And I would make the point that a lot of our Christmas events weren't free. And I, what I am really wanting is that a further report when we come back for a final decision on this. Not only do we cover the point about a formal risk assessment in relation to the knock-on effect, but we also have a very specific proposal of our free or free events using that funding at Christmas time that benefits the Dundee public. And I'm very conscious of the, there are families struggling. Christmas is going to be a real challenge, even more so for significant numbers of Dundee families. And what I would have liked to have seen in this report is a very specific proposal as to alternative free events over the festive season to use that fifty thousand pounds as opposed to it being sunk into Christmas and paid for events. And that's my, that's my concern. So that's why we're asking that we pause on this. We don't reject the report today. We pause on it. And we ask officers to bring back a further report covering both these areas. We had said to the next committee, we get the point about the timeframe and therefore we're seeing if necessary to the recess subcommittee. Thank you, convenor.
Right, thank you for that. I think you're being seconded by councillor Coleman, you said? Yeah, sorry, it's in the chat. Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. convenor. I echo my colleague Bailey McPherson and I've listened with interest to the discussion this evening. But yeah, I think, I know I've heard from Mr. Hamilton about, you know, what the fire service may have said, that things have been markedly worse, but I mean, there have been well-publicised events of firework misuse over the city the last two years. And there must be a proper risk assessment for, with police and fire input that's then presented to this committee so we can scrutinise and consider it before making our decisions. The message has been for the last few years that go to the public events, do not attempt to use your own private fireworks, given the dangers that are related with them. And that's been conveniently dropped now and that is concerning to me. I would say as well, the last couple of years, people maybe have accepted, oh, Covid, we can't go to the, you know, the fireworks display, it'll be back next year, it'll be back next year. If we keep kicking it down the road, people are eventually going to say, oh, stick it, we're going to have our own ones. And then we're really having trouble, you know, we're going to turn it into bring your own firework events, you know, that are going to be in back gardens with booze and then we're all intermingled before we know it, someone is going to get seriously hurt. So there's a serious potential for knock-on effects, negative knock-on effects if no, no properly run and see public displays are being run. So I'd be quite keen to see a proper risk assessment brought back to this committee that we could fully consider, or indeed the recess committee as appropriate. Thank you, Mr. convenor.
No, thank you for that. I will be minded not to take the amendment and just that my motion would be to continue with the report and as it is. I think I take on board what you're saying, Billy McPherson, a number of things within there. But I'm confident the events team who have produced a number of activities across the city, even over the Christmas period for free. And I think that's their focus. The Bar Street events coming up shortly, I believe, are all free. And I think that's just, it just shows what the events team can do with the funding when given to them. I think holding back would be delay all this from happening. I think holding back from going, holding this report back even further will delay the team from actually being able to progress any events as we approach the period and the build-up to Christmas to allow families who are going to, are struggling, struggling for a number of reasons by particular governments elsewhere, but struggling in the sense where we can actually provide the facilities and provide the events for them to bring their families down and enjoy the experience as they can through difficult times. I believe in the community cohesion, I absolutely agree with you. And I think that's what we're going to try and do here, is to actually create that community cohesion by giving a longer period of free events as we build up to Christmas, a very difficult time for many. So as it is, I'm going to move that we stay with the report and put the report forward as it is. Can I have a second or please? I see councillor Rome's. You second councillor Rome?
Yes, thank you, convenor. And I wouldn't belabour the point because I think there's been a lot covered tonight. And I think this is a highly emotive issue. It's already been discussed. It's a motive with elected members. It's a motive with the public. And there are differing views on it. I myself have extremely fond memories of having my youngest sister on my shoulders watching the fireworks. And as has been rightly said, it's something that's been beloved by the public, although not universally. However, I don't think we can ignore the duties placed by the protect duty on the council in order to carry out events safely. And I do have confidence in the work that officers have done in looking at the alternatives. And indeed, I've seen a lot of the work that they've done in order to look at these alternatives. And I take heart for the recommendation in two point one B that this is going to further events in the city that people can attend for free. And I'm fully confident the events team will be doing this with this extra resource. So while I think in many respects it's sad, I think it's something that they necessarily have to do. Sorry, I've got screaming baby in the background. And yeah, so I will be backing you tonight, convenor.
Thank you for that, councillor Rome. Arlene, can we move to the vote, please?
Yeah, but the motion by the convenor, seconded by councillor Rome, is agreement of the report. The amendment by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Coleman, is as circulated. Convenor?
Motion?
Councillor Alexander?
Motion?
Councillor Anderson?
Motion?
Lord Provost?
Motion?
Deputy Lord Provost?
Motion?
Councillor Dawson?
The motion?
Councillor El Nakla?
Motion?
Councillor Hunter?
Motion?
Councillor Lynn?
Motion?
Did Bailey Roberts manage to join?
No, she hasn't.
No, okay, thank you. Councillor Rome?
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers?
Motion.
Councillor Short?
Motion.
Councillor Smith?
Motion.
Councillor Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank?
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan?
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh?
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin?
Amendment.
Councillor Scullen?
Amendment.
Councillor Shears?
Amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Sorry, amendment.
Bailey McPherson?
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman?
Amendment.
Councillor Crichton?
Amendment.
Councillor Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
So that's fourteen for the motion and thirteen for the amendment.
Thank you very much. That's the report passed and agreed. Uh, can we move on to the next one, please? Arlene, please?
Yeah. Item eight, service plan update. This is for approval.
This is just the six-monthly service plan review. Uh, do you have any questions? Uh, councillor Crichton?
Thank you, convenor. Um, yeah, I've got a question about the performance indicators for building warrants on pages forty-one and forty-two, uh, which gives a sharp drop in previous performance in Q two of twenty nineteen to twenty. And this data is real old, and I was wondering if officers could give me a reassurance about the current performance.
Arlene, Mr Presswood, please.
Chair, yeah, I'm very happy to comment on that point. Um, and I think I first of all should say by way of context, there are a number of indicators where the information uh, is dated, because it's not available perhaps on a six monthly basis, or indeed an annual basis in, in some of these indicators. Um, so when it comes to review the service plan, we would wish to work with corporate colleagues to, to try and focus on one where, ones where the information is updated more readily to facilitate, uh, reading and monitoring of progress by elected members. In terms of the building standards indicators specifically, my understanding, uh, is that this is a significant lag indicator, because the information is, um, drawn from Scottish government publications. We feed the information to them, they process it, compare it with other authorities, and then they feed it back to us, um, hence the delay. Uh, in terms of the current, um, performance, um, I, I think it may be better for us to come back with a separate briefing on this, uh, to, uh, the elected members. Uh, there has been a substantial problem within, uh, building standards, um, because there was significant turnover of staff. Uh, and, um, ob, obviously the impact of the pandemic, and so we start to come out with that a lot more building activity. So we have fallen behind our targets. I'm not sure whether Mr Hamilton has any data on that, but I think a separate briefing, um, highlighting that. There is a very clear strategy in place to rebuild the team after that turnover of staff. And to ensure we get back to our normal standing, which is one of the best building standards authorities in Scotland. Um, but, yeah, Gregor, would you like to, to comment and supplement that?
Happy to, Robin. Um, I, I don't have the data that's up to date, but I can certainly, uh, arrange to give you the most, uh, up-to-date and current information that we have. But as Robin, uh, has outlined, there are significant challenges, not just within building standards in Dundee. It's a national issue. Uh, I think many local authorities are facing recruitment challenges. Um, we are responding to that. We have restructured the team, uh, and there are a number of new posts that have been created. Uh, we've also, um, embarked upon a, a modern apprenticeship programme. So we've already appointed one modern apprentice. We're in the process of recruiting a second. And that's part of a long-term national strategy to increase the number of qualified people doing this important piece of work. Uh, I think certainly the, the conversations I have with the team, there is an improvement in performance that is already being realised, but I'll provide more detail of that, uh, to members.
Thank you. Councillor Crichton, would you like to come back?
Uh, no, just thank you both, uh, for your answer. And yeah, if I could get the detail from Gregor, that'd be great.
Thank you. And I think taking the opportunity, Mr Presswood offered, uh, a brief briefing, I think might be helpful, especially for new members as well, just to get an update on what we have with stuff. Uh, Billy McPherson, please.
Uh, thanks convenor. My question's about the data on page forty-one and in relation to the city centre retail units vacancy rate. Um, under the current target, um, uh, column, it says the target's thirteen percent. If you read the narrative, I think actually what it's trying to tell you is that the actual vacancy rate is thirteen percent and the target's eleven point three nine percent, if I've understood it correctly, but officers will, will doubtless, uh, clarify. And I'm just really wondering how up-to-date that information is. Um, and, um, obviously, I think we would all agree that there are significant challenges facing our city centre. Um, you know, a quick walk from, you know, along, uh, coming out the Well Gate, walking along the Money Gate, along the High Street towards, uh, the Nether Gate, you, you, you can just sense it. And we're not alone. Uh, I mean, obviously, this is a, a real challenge facing uh, town and city centres right across, um, the country. But I just view it as an absolutely key priority for, um, the council, uh, in relation to keeping a vibrant, um, city centre going forward. Now, I'm not looking for a comprehensive answer on every initiative that's been taken on that tonight, but I think it's something that I think elected members should have, and I am, I'm sure do have a real interest in. And I think if we're talking about briefings, that's the sort of area that I would be really interested in, because, um, we, we absolutely want to see rejuvenation of, uh, empty, uh, retail units, um, in, in the city centre. But I was just really wondering if I could have clarity on the vacant, the current vacancy rate, how, uh, how recent is this particular information? And, uh, that would be really helpful. Thank you, convenor.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr Presswood?
Yeah, uh, many thanks, convenor. Uh, I believe this is, um, the twenty-one data, rather than the twenty-two data, which hasn't yet been finalised. Um, your assessment is correct. The, the performance is poorer than the target, which represents eleven point three nine percent. And we have discussed it internally as a management team, and, and this is the standard, um, template, which, which we use corporately, but I think it doesn't particularly work for um, this type of target. So I think in the future, we would like to have a separate column setting out the actual performance against the target, just to make it more readable. Um, so the, the downward arrow, I think, reflects the fact that we are performing poorer than the, uh, the, the target. So there is some ambiguity there with this one. Um, I think one of the reasons this reads surprisingly low is that this will be the number of units rather than the total floor space that's vacant. Because many of the smaller units have held up well, particularly the independent units within the, the town centre. But obviously the big retailers, um, have closed down, and I think members are aware that, um, since twenty nineteen, five of the largest retailers have closed in the city centre. So I think it's fair to say there's an incredible challenge to reinvent the, the, the city centre. Um, and we are obviously addressing that both through a short-term programme of, um, additional revenue funding, which was agreed at the budget. Um, and perhaps more importantly, the, um, the, the, the finalisation of the city centre strategic improvement plan, uh, which we aim to bring back to committee in the early, uh, autumn.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Presswood. Uh, I think that's the point. The city centre strategic investment plan, Billy McPherson, is something we probably would be actually briefing on anyway.
Yeah, I completely concur, convenor. That would be a, a good opportunity in advance of that actually going to committee, to have some form of briefing with elected members, because it is an, it is an area of interest that I'm sure we're all, we're all, uh, very interested in, because obviously we want to see our, uh, city centre, you know, rejuvenated where necessary and, and, and thriving in the future. So grateful to, for Mr Presswood's response.
Absolutely. And I think we want the city centre, district centres, we all want to see it thriving. I think we'll make sure you, we'll get the briefing sorted prior to committee. Uh, Mr Presswood, I think you've taken note of that already. Uh, Bailey Keenan, please.
Yeah, uh, thanks, convenor. Um, I'm drawing your attention to page thirty-six, and it would appear that, uh, journeys made by public transport are, are considerably down, uh, reporting obviously thirty-two percent as opposed to the current target of forty. And I'm just wondering, it's, it's suggesting it's a short-term trend. I'm just wondering what we're actively doing to get people back on the bus. I know that, uh, obviously, government's message was don't travel unless you have to. Uh, and, you know, I think that the services in the city have been cut considerably uh, over a period of time. And, uh, if we're going to address climate emergency and the like, we need to get people back using buses. So uh, uh, I would welcome officers' view on that. Uh, the other one that I would like, while we're looking for the questions, is in relation to the number of houses built. And I notice it says, uh, the target is five hundred. And I'm wondering how many we have actually built, given that in social rented sector, we're having to meet any target of two hundred for about the last seven year. I think last time there was only twenty-seven houses built. Uh, and if we're targeting for two hundred a year, how are we not getting close to it? And, you know, what, what we're building by way of, uh, uh, homes in the private sector, given that, you know, I accept money is tight, and, and we obviously look at that in policy and resources later. But if each of these houses was, uh, a thousand pounds worth of council tax, uh, then there's a considerable amount of collection, uh, going to go on uh, by way of additional revenue coming to water city. So what numbers have we got? And I know that, that obviously in housing that we're miles behind, where we should be in relation to houses being built.
I'll bring Mr Presswood in a second, but I think we'll go back to the buses and transportation. We do have a, a Covid, we've had working from home, support from the Scottish government on buses, et cetera. So we are encouraging people to actually use buses going forward. And I think that's the important part here. We are, do have a climate challenge, but I think when we actually take into the Covid and the factor of Covid, I think you're misinterpreting a number of things there. But I'll bring Mr Presswood in to answer your question directly.
Many thanks, convenor. Um, in, in terms of the percentage of journeys to work made by public or active transport indicator, I think, to be honest, this is one of the indicators we wish to review, because if you look at the, the right-hand column, it says that it's got a sample size of nineteen. It's derived from the Scottish household survey data published in twenty twenty. I suspect if it was published in twenty twenty, the survey data will be either early twenty twenty or even late twenty nineteen. But most importantly, the sample size is ninety. So it, it simply isn't statistically accurate to base that kind of, um, uh, judgment around performance on that. So I think we as officers need to take that away and develop a new measure, um, to allow us to monitor more effectively the, the usage of public and active travel um, across the city, uh, because I very much take on board the challenges that you've made. Um, in terms of housing completions, uh, we anticipate that for year, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, we will exceed the target. Uh, and that that is the first time, uh, in probably five years that we have exceeded that target. Um, I think there's a number of factors there. First of all, that many sites will have been frozen, um, during the sort of six to eight month moratorium on construction activity during the first phase of, of Covid. Um, that backlog is now coming through, and we're seeing, um, uh, many of those sites being completed. More importantly, I believe that as Dundee's confidence grows back, uh, we are proving to be an increasingly attractive location for investment by private house builders. And as members know, uh, we believe that the construction sector is a very important part of the Dundee economy. And each house built generally supports roughly the equivalent of two members of staff for one year. So if we're building five hundred houses, that's sustaining about a thousand jobs in the construction sector, both, um, white collar and blue collar jobs throughout the sector. Um, so it's immensely important, not just for the jobs, but in, in terms of the regeneration impact, particularly on local communities, uh, particularly where we can bring, uh, brownfield, uh, sites through the system. In, in terms of affordable housing, it remains, um, a very important priority for the city. And we work very closely with the housing team on the strategic housing investment programme. Uh, we, um, recognise the trends that you've identified, but there are, I think, five major, um, uh, RSL, re- registered social landlord developments on-site within the city. So we expect to see numbers increasing very rapidly, uh, as some of those developments are finalised. And, uh, and once again, there's a range of factors, um, for that. Um, housing development tends to be lumpy, and I think we're seeing on a large number of very significant sites in, in the registered social landlord sector coming through. Um, but also one of the major sites was delayed by pandemic and the fact that the developer went into receivership as part of that. So probably that set that development back by um, a year to two years while that was unwound and a new developer, a, a new construction partner was brought on site.
Thank you. It's very positive to hear that the building is exceeding the target, uh, going forward. Uh, Bailey Keenan, would you like to come back?
Yeah, convenor, I mean, that's very positive, and, and I'm just wondering if there's any finance officer on the call of the night that want to make a comment in relation to the council tax, or anticipated increase in council tax collection, and where, where that would reflect in the budget.
I think what, I think we'll come from the service pla, uh, service support. I think we'll just leave that to P and R question possibly, and, uh, move on from there. I think councillor Short, please.
Uh, thank you, convenor. Uh, my question was around, um, page forty-six and forty-five. It was to do with, um, staff and retention and, uh, having the right people in the right place. Um, with, uh, with the opportunity that I've had recently with APSY, um, I've been at a couple of events, and there've been national events, and we're definitely not alone, uh, both with yourselves in city development and across the city. Uh, and as you all know, I'm a great believer, if you can't see it, you can't be it. Um, are we doing anything at that very early stage to encourage, um, women to, uh, take up roles in local authority? We're now in a position that, uh, there's a very strong team and taking those, um, this, these, uh, positions, uh, within the organisation where you can see the glass ceilings being broken through. But is it something that is apparent all the way through the organisation? And are we reaching out to, um, to, to young women to say, have you thought about, uh, local authority? Because any conversations that I've had, uh, with women who have risen within the organisation, unlike myself, who took time out when I had my son, they, they have had their continuous, and they've moved within jobs and progressed within the same organisation, whereas I've started again a few times.
Mr Presswood?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Important question. And I think one of the things that we have said within our workforce plan is a recognition that city development has been typically professions which, or many of the professions have been dominated by men. And for example, of the senior management team, there are comparatively few, um, women in city development. So we recognise that, and we are, uh, working on how we get a better gen, gender balance within the management team. In terms of the new recruits, uh, we do work very closely with HR and recruitment policy. Um, and I will pick that up specifically with them to make sure that we are advertising and promoting roles in a way that is encouraging, um, women into the workforce. I think the final thing I would like to say is that, um, through our employability team, we do work very regularly with employers across the city to bring um, candidates that have been without work for some time. Now, we would be, uh, encouraging all sorts of groups that are out with the workforce. It wouldn't be restricted anymore to long-term unemployed. Um, so that could, could cover women returners, it could cover adults with mental health constraints, it, it could cover, um, a whole range of, uh, uh, of different marginalised groups in the workforce. So those employer ability academies are tailored to the, the needs of all the major employers that are recruiting within the city. So that could be, uh, Social Security Scotland, we've worked with. Um, it, it could be the bus company, uh, it could be, um, construction sector, uh, could be hospitality. So we work the range of employers. We have worked with Teyside contracts, and obviously there'll be a large female workforce there to, to try and, uh, develop further. Um, and certainly there's a potential where we have larger scale recruitment to work with, um, the, the city council itself as an employer.
Yeah, thank you for that. Councillor Short?
Happy.
Yeah, okay, thanks very much for, Mr Presswood. Uh, no more questions, so I'll take this report as agreed. Thank you. Uh, Arlene?
That takes us on to the confidential part of the agenda. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual way?
Can I take this, we agree with, take this in the usual manner? Yep, let's, don't see any questions, nodding heads. Yep, thank you very much for that. And that's the business for city development tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, convenor. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening. Uh, Willie, we'll just get straight on with the business.
Yeah, thanks, convenor. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? There are no declarations, then it takes you on to item two, which is one of the pension subcommittee and pension board of twenty-first of March. This is for noting.
Any questions on this? Nope, okay, take that as agreed.
Item three then, before you say the report on consultation on review of integration scheme, this is also for noting.
Hopefully self-explanatory. Again, any questions, comments on this? No, okay, can I take that out? Sorry, Bailey Keenan?
We, but, but slower on that finger than.
That's all right, no worries.
Uh, the, 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 the comment on the integration scheme would really just to seek clarification as to whether, uh, there is a, a mechanism built in now that would release the large hospital set-aside fund back into community care much quicker than has happened previously. I think that, uh, it took forever before any money was ever released in that manner. Uh, and I'm not sure we ever got the amount that was expected. So I wonder if, if, if we've got something built in there, uh, in, in this, uh, review.
Uh, happy to bring officers in to clarify the position. I'm just looking at, uh, Diane on the call. Diane, are you in a position to give a view on that?
Thank you. Yes, hi. Yeah, it's Bailey Keenan, that's that's something that the financial officers are discussing as they're going forward with the work in terms of what's happening. I can see that the chief exec has also got his hand up, though unfortunately, if Daddy's not here and I'm happy to come back with further information.
Okay, I'll accept that we get further information back on that. But it'd be useful to know that they were making every effort possible to release cash back into community care much quicker.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. Thanks very much, Diane, for following that up. Now, I didn't see Greg's hand go up, but it's gone up and down. Greg, are you doing the whole cake, okay, or do you want to come in?
I'm happy to come in, convenor. So in response to Bailey Keenan's question, there's been no change as far as I'm aware to the integration scheme with regards to the provisions around the large hospital set aside. And the review of the integration scheme was allowed modernising it to bring it up to date with current job titles and reflecting any change that we had in services. What I can give a commitment is, as Diane has said, we continue to work with partners, which one of the main ones is NHS Tayside. And I'm looking at that balance of acute services and freeing up money to then enhance the community services. So that discussion and those continue with chief finance officers within the IGB and the council and within NHS Tayside. But the scheme before you still allows that to happen in the ways that it did before the review was carried out.
Thanks for that clarification, Greg. Okay. Any other questions, comments on this? No, can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Yeah, thanks very much. Item four then, before he's a reporter in local code of corporate governance, you're asked to give the recommendations.
This is the annual compliance review and update to the corporate governance arrangements. Any questions, comments on this? Nope. Can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Yeah, thanks. Item five then, before he's reducing harm associated with drugs, you're asked to give the recommendations.
Obviously, this is a really important issue, I think, for all of us in terms of how we continue to drive forward that agenda of tackling drugs in the city. The report updates members on the priorities for improvement and on progress towards developing a replacement strategic framework and delivery plan. And I emphasise the words delivery, which will come back to a future committee and will be taken forward in conjunction with a number of other individuals, organisations and representative bodies across the city as well. The report notes that progress has been achieved against a series of areas, but also acknowledges the latest update from the Drug Commission, something that I think we would all want to reflect on. And I know in my role previously on the ADP alongside Bailey Keenan as well, there is much progress that still needs to be made to get the situation that the city faces into a position that any of us could be not happy with, but certainly mindful that we're moving forward with. With all that said, I will bring in colleagues. So first of all, I've got councillor Lynn.
Hi, thanks for that, convenor. I think the first thing I'd like to do, and I should place this on record from Dundee City Council, all its members, is to thank all of those who participated in the work of the Drugs Commission over the last few years. The Drugs Commission, for those who don't know, was comprised of experts in the fields of drug and alcohol use and also those with lived experience and family members of those with lived experience. And all of them gave their their time over the course of many, many meetings and did years freely and without any financial gain. I think in normal times would be having about three civic receptions for them, but I'm not able to do that at the moment. So I think we should certainly express our gratitude as a council, although I believe the Dundee Partnership already have, but we should too. I know there's there's some criticism of the pace of of change, convenor, but I do think that we have made some notable progress in the last few years. Not the least of which, I think, is the work that's done by the Non-Fatal Overdose Group, which meets every day and follows up people who have had a non fatal overdose the the day before or certainly as soon as possible. And they provide a rapid response. Now, I think it's the the number of people who've been helped by this service so far is in excess of five hundred and fifty. So that's a considerable effort and a very important service. And that's been recognised by Cosla, who recently gave the team an award. We've also seen naloxone provision improvements as well as increased staffing levels in the Dundee Drug and Alcohol Recovery Service, or DARS, which itself will be moved out of Constitution House, which I think will be progress in itself because that's a building which isn't really fit for purpose and the sooner we get a move out of there, the better. You know, we had this paper at the IGB last week and I said then that it felt like we were in the starting blocks in in terms of really upping the pace of change and improving services. And I think that's what everyone wants to see. I think that's what we indeed must must do and it says so in the report because the lives of our citizens depend on getting this right and upping the the pace of change. So thank you, convenor.
Thanks very much. Councillor Lynn certainly endorsed everything you've said and obviously later on under item seven, we'll also discuss the proposed allocation of funding against some other preventative measures, so additional money for the youth in Iceland model, for example, to carry out some further work and also seven hundred and sixty thousand pounds to support the work of of the, I suppose, implementing the Drug Commission Action Plan and also looking at mental health provision. So I think there's there's always more that we could do. I think there's cross party support for that continued focus in driving forward with action. And again, there will be further reports that come forward to this committee and others to consider whether those actions are the right ones and whether they're moving quick enough for all of us in terms of saving lives and affecting change. With all that said, I'll come to councillor Coleman next.
Thank you, Mr. Convenor. And as you know, this is about saving lives, isn't it? So it's all about. So it's given the concerns though from the Dundee Drug Commission about efforts made thus far have not gone far enough, deep enough or fast enough. Can I have an assurance that commitments given in appendix three and specifically the target timescales will be met and in full by the specified dates?
Thanks, councillor Coleman. So I'll bring in officers to maybe add comment. First of all, I can't offer you that commitment in the sense that I don't control all the services and neither does Dundee City Council. But I am certainly committed, as I know you are equally, in making sure that we offer that significant scrutiny of the progress and use everything in our powers to make sure that we are moving forward at pace. And I know the colleagues who are representative of the IGB, of the ADP and other organisations and the third sector in particular, who have a really vitally important role in the drugs agenda, will all be putting their shoulder to the wheel to affect change as well. So my commitment is that that I will do everything I can. And I know I speak for everybody cross party when I say that they will do all that they can. But last officers to come in and provide some additional comment on those points. Diane, come to you first, please.
Yes, thank you, councillor Coleman. A number of the actions in the action plan are actually also driven by national mission work in terms of drug and alcohol services, implementation of what's called an education assistant treatment standards. And we have quite a lot of support in terms of additional funding to start to build our infrastructure around those areas of work. So not only are we setting our own targets in regard to some of the actions which are there, some of those are set nationally. So we will be kind of looking to ensure that we actually deliver within those timescales. Do recognise it's quite a full action plan, but quite a lot of that work is ongoing and has previously started and is starting to demonstrate results. So we are confident, as we can be, that the ambitious targets we've put in place will be will be met over the next year and aim to continue to report against that.
Thanks, Diane. And perhaps also invite Greg, just to come in at this point as well, to talk about, I suppose, that that wider perspective and thinking about the Dundee Partnership. Because this is about the city's response to a crisis, not just the council's response. I think it's really important to emphasise that. So Chief Executive, can I bring you in, please?
Thanks, convenor, and thanks councillor Coleman for the question. Just to give you the assurance that the Dundee Partnership considered this report last week. So did the IGB and NHS Board will consider this report, I believe, towards the end of this week. And as the convenor has said, the the actions contained within the action plan are a result of discussions and agreement with partners. So it's very much about a city approach to how we deliver this. So I can give you an assurance based on the information that I've got available to me at this point, that we will progress with the actions. But what's important to remember is there's a number of moving fees within here that require all partners to move. And I'm confident that everyone has this as a priority within their own organisation so that we can deliver on the actions. Now, I'll do caveat that because I don't know what will happen over the next year. As I didn't know back in two thousand and twenty, we would go through a global pandemic. But I'm assured that we're all clear about what we need to do. This report has a number of priorities and as Diane has says, we will drive those forwards to continue the work that councillor Lynn outlined has been carried out to date.
Thanks very much, Greg. Okay, can I go to councillor Creighton next, please?
Yeah, thank you, convenor. Four point three point three, it says enhancing the role of community pharmacies is highlighted. And what specifically is meant by the enhanced role?
Okay, thanks very much. That's a really good question. I'll bring in Diane in just a moment. I think the other thing to say is, as we move forward with the process of the creation or, you know, the the progress with the development of the action plan, I'd fully expect and would be asking officers to make sure that there are further briefings organised over the next six months or so to make sure that we're appraised of each of the elements within that and how that is going to contribute to reducing drug deaths in the city. So you have that guarantee, they will take that forward as well. But Diane, can I come to you on the specific of that question, please?
Yes, certainly. There's been quite a lot of work done with our community pharmacies, including introducing a new service level agreement, which expands the role that they may have previously had under service level agreement before. So we do count on our community pharmacy to be a point of contact for people who are using substances or are receiving medication assistance treatment. It's about how they feed back to us, how we monitor and support them in the ongoing support of the people that they work with and continuing to look at some of the harm reduction aspects that they might also deliver. So that's been led by our lead pharmacist within NHS Tayside and Health and Social Care Partnership in order to continue to explore what other things pharmacists can do. But it's a really good point of contact for people.
Thanks very much, Diane. Councillor Short next.
Thank you. This is obviously very much about a partnership approach. And I just thought I would bring to the table something that I experienced today. And I was in the Maryfield Police Station, speaking to my local inspector. And he showed me that he had the recovery app, the Dundee Recovery App on his phone. And that had gone around all the various inspectors across the city recently and they were then giving it down to their various teams. And for me, that's something that's really important because it is that all across the city, every single part of the partnership doing their bit. And it was great to see that actually happening in the reality of the day to day. There's a lot of emphasis and a lot of the things that we do now when it comes to service delivery about the fact that we bring people with us because we're listening and we use their experience and that helps us then to deliver. And and we call it lived experience. And as with everything, we should be there with our dignity, fairness and respect. And I know because of the work that I do with the Fairness Commission, that when the Fairness Commission meet with us, they then have a real kind of wraparound from Jackie Close and the team when they've had the various meetings. Because it can be, I'm sure you will all imagine, quite traumatic to go over and over again, things that have happened. So can can I, I'm just basically looking for a wee bit of assurance that when we do use lived experience and we do listen to voices, that we are giving back that care and respect and love that we would expect to give our anyone in the city, please.
Thanks very much for your comments and for your question. And certainly I would endorse with that. I think it's really important that that lived experience is up front and centre in this conversation. There is nobody that knows the issues of, you know, whether it be deprivation and poverty, like you mentioned, in terms of the Fairness Commission, whether it's drugs, mental health and the other challenges, those that are directly affected. And I don't just mean the individual, but their families, their connections, communities as well. And I think Diane will correct me if I'm wrong, but the the whole focus, or at least a significant part of the focus, is about that co-creation with the city. And I hate using that phrase because I feel like it's overused these days, but co-creation is absolutely paramount when we're looking at the action plan and the development of that. Your specific question of wraparound and ongoing support, I'll come to Diane in the first instance to see if she can offer a view, Diane?
Yeah, we fund Dundee volunteering and voluntary action to provide a peer support network, councillor Short, which means that we actually employ staff to work with people who might be part of our ongoing kind of collaboration around our service development and the work that we do. So we do already invest in that area of work. It is a really, really important point, though, because we recognise that sometimes when we're asking people to repeat the story, that can bring up some real emotion and feelings in terms of the support that they need. So we're very mindful of it. It is absolutely part of the work that we do around our trauma informed practice in recognition of that work. I think we need to continue to strive to ensure that we do it really well and that that occurs in every every incident and every interaction that we have with individuals. But we invest and we have support from some outside agencies in order to consider and to look how we might do that.
Thanks very much, Diane. I'll come to Bailey Keenan next.
Okay, thanks, convenor. I'd like to start by echoing councillor Lynn's comment in regards to the Drugs Commission. I think it was comments that needed to be said. I think we attracted a lot of expertise into the city. And as he said, the people give free of their time. And I think they delivered fairly an assessment of where we were. The regrettable thing, I suppose, is I believe that we should have used them a bit more given the offer was there as a sort of critical friend to assessing our quality assurance going forward. But we are where we are and and we have obviously a reduction harm paper in front of us. And, you know, I'm wishing it all the best. I do have some concerns in the initiative as to where we manage it and as to whether we ultimately achieve it. As you say, there's a lot of partners need to be involved in it. I think another thing that that I raised at the partnership was on how the funding initiatives from the Scottish Government, I don't think help matters. If we keep on looking for, over the shoulder for an expert of funding to make a difference, then it leaves an uncertainty within our own staff. And it'd be much easier to know, we have more clarity, you know, if funds were coming in. Can we can we keep going on the action plan rather than just look at new initiatives? You know, I'm sure that, you know, the action plan's big enough. It could absorb other cash coming in, but it'd be easier to to for to bring that stability to staff rather than, you know, this approach of here's a bit of money, let's try for that. And when it's unsuccessful, try for someone else or, you know, we didn't particularly get that. So, you know, I think that I wish the plan well, but, you know, I made the point to the Scottish Government's representative at the Dundee Partnership in the hope that he takes it back to ministers, that they need to fund things. You know, a bit more upfront and rather than a bidding process.
Thanks very much for your comments, Bailey Keenan. I think I was on the same call you were in terms of the Dundee Partnership. And I know that there was a commitment given to take that back to Scottish Government. I think it's also worth saying that there is significant funding going into this area from Scottish Government. And I know that I've actively discussed this with my colleagues, Shona and Joe locally, about how we can continue to utilise that for the benefit of Dondonians who are facing this crisis themselves or family members or friends as well. And I think it's important to recognise that there is always more that we could be doing. And as we move forward with the action plan, key areas where we think we might be able to utilise funding, it's important that we're also proactive, so not just waiting for funding announcements, but us potentially leading the calls on some aspects. And I know that my colleagues in Scottish Government have been quite receptive to that. And again, the onus again on the partnership to make sure that we're driving forward with that change, that ambition and that agenda for delivering. And again, go back to the point that we will consider the action plan and the delivery plan over the next few months, which will be really important for all of us, I think, in making sure that we are content with the directions of travel and content that it's going to deliver the results that we all want to see. I'll now come to councillor, councillor El Nakla. You're on mute, Nadia.
Sorry about that. I did click it and then clicked it back on. So thank you, convenor. I just wanted to take this opportunity. I know that councillor Coleman was asking about commitment. And as a new member of the ADP, I just wanted to really show that I'm very committed to the role that I've been given and of scrutinising. I take this opportunity as well to acknowledge that the pace does need to be ramped up and that there is a brilliant action plan there which goes across multi agencies and does really highlight that this goes across political parties and that we really need to work together within our and does really highlight that this goes across political parties and that we really need to work together within our communities so that we all have a really strong prevention and a really amazing recovery plan that is built on compassion and respect. I bring professional experience, two years in addiction service, and I also have my own family member of lived experience. So I hope to bring all of that and really I'm committed to making Dundee the city of recovery.
Thanks very much, Nadia. I think you'll certainly be deployed with all that experience to the benefit of, I think, everybody in Dundee. And again, I think colleagues across the board all have something to bring to the table. I think it's really important that we use that. As you rightly say, your lived experience or your own personal experiences to help inform the direction of travel that we're moving forward with as well. So really appreciate your comments and your commitment to that agenda as well. I see no other questions or comments. So with all that said, can I take this item as agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie.
Okay, thank you. Item six, then, before he's reported investing in Scotland's future resources spending review, you asked to agree the recommendations.
Again, important item before us today, and I will defer to officers in just a moment. It's important to say that this spending review is just that. It is not set in stone. And I would hope that things would move in local government's favour over the next wee while. And I'll certainly be advocating for more resources for local government, as I always do. And as members from across the political spectrum know that I do. It's important to say that there is significant money going into key areas that I think we would all support, looking at health, looking at social care, and of course, looking at social security at a time of cost of living crisis. It's important that we're deploying resources to these areas to make sure that we're supporting the widest possible complement of citizens as possible. With all that said, I'm going to defer first of all to Greg and then perhaps to Robert as well, just to offer a professional kind of response to the paper before us. So Greg, can I come to you first?
Yeah, thanks, convener. So as you've outlined, this is the resource spending review. It's not a budget. But at the moment, what's being projected is the flat cash for local authorities. So the intention is to highlight the information and give some scenarios around section three about what movements in terms of pay award and inflation would mean. And officers will be working on a further report, looking at transformation work scenes within the council and also the council's people strategy, so that we ensure that what we are doing is training and building our staff for future services, as well as current services. Before I pass over to Robert, it's probably worth highlighting at this point that it is my intention to ask officers to review the council's capital plan and bring that back to a future committee due to the large cost of inflationary increases that we are currently seeing. And I think it would be timely to review it so that we can be clear about spending priorities, given the increase in costs that we are beginning to see. So officers will start that work and bring something back to committee for discussion and agreement once it's completed. So that's all I had to say, convener. I don't know whether or not you'd like me now just to pass over to Robert to give any views from a section ninety five officer perspective.
Yes, please. So is Brian. Robert?
Right, thank you, convener. I think, I think the only thing probably to add to what the chief executive has just given us is that it's important from my perspective that we start the planning for the period ahead. So from my perspective, the most important recommendation is that we bring back to you as soon as we can after recess forward financial plans. And as Greg was just highlighting there, we need to think both about revenue and capital resources and that. So I hope to take any questions, convener.
Thanks very much to both of you for that. I'll come to Bailey Keenan first.
Okay, thanks for that. I agree with you and I'm prepared to get involved in the lobbying for additional cash for local government. Especially, I think it makes stark reading at the moment. Few, few perhaps questions, you know, given that we have not as yet settled up the wage deal for this year, bearing in mind that there was two percent built into the budget and the government seemed to have set a trend now for about five percent of an increase. So that's a three percent increase. I wonder if officers would give one indication, if that was to be the case, how much money we'd be looking for if that's the case? And how that would reflect in future years on a sort of flat cash position? And bearing in mind that the chief executive, you know, I suppose in asking that question, you know, I asked it based on, you know, you make reference yourself, convener, to the cost of living crisis. And our staff are affected by that as equally as everyone else. And so I think it's a case of we've got to be realistic about where things are likely to land. The other one is in relation to the capital plan, because I know that we've still got a report for the Olympia to come forward, which is capital expenditure. And we also have, you know, a large amount of money being spent on repairing roofs because of a blunder that council made, that will be spent on revenue, I think. And, you know, I'm wondering how that will reflect in revenue spend and the need to make potential cuts because of that, overrunning the the potential budget that it's got at the moment if inflation or building inflation is running away with things. The capital plan needs reviewed.
Yeah, thanks for your questions, Bailey Keenan. First of all, in terms of the first question, which was specific to wage settlement, clearly the difference between a two percent and a five percent equates to seven point two million according to section three of the report. But I'll come to Robert in the first instance to offer any further perspective. So Robert, can I ask you to answer that question first, please?
Thanks, convener. I think you've answered it. I think the important point to note is that any wage settlement is recurring and will have a have a forward impact for us. But but we've put the figures in the report essentially for that reason. So you can, you can see what that type of impact will be. And we're very mindful, obviously, that other settlements have been in that region.
Yeah, okay. Thanks very much for that. And I'll come back to you in a moment. Bailey Keenan can see you've taken your mic off, but just to pick up on the second point. I think officers are not going to have a detailed response for you right now. And that's the whole purpose of them doing a review and bringing back further information. This report is obviously about the wider conversation set out as part of the Scottish Government's strategic overview of spending. So it isn't about our specific capital plan, and that will come back, as the chief executive has already said. But I'll come back to you. Just, I think you probably want to come back in, I sense. You're muted, Kevin.
If we've not got a Pacific, have we got an indication of where they believe construction inflation or price inflation is running? Because they'll probably, are they running at different levels? You know, given, so so we can get an indication of, you know, where things are happening within relation to our own budget. And and obviously, this is a prediction of where we're going forward on a new cash settlement.
Thanks. Again, that's something that will be covered in our report that's related to the revenue, sorry, the review of capital. But I'll ask officers just to offer an initial response to that. I think we're all acutely aware of newspaper articles stemming from other local authorities. So I know, for example, Aberdeen have put halt on their capital plan and are reviewing that at this present time. We probably have all seen the reports of moneyfeath high and the impact it's had. It will be particular to each development, depending upon the nature of that development. But there is clearly construction inflation, which is more broadly quantified. So, Robert, can I come to you perhaps just to offer a quick insight into those figures?
Thanks, convener. I think the answer is that it does depend from project to project. I think we've seen some projects where they've managed to contain inflation and it maybe depends on the nature of the works and what's driving it. Other projects I have heard of where costs have gone up to thirty percent. So I think, you know, we're talking at a broad range and potentially a significant impact. That's why we'll be undertaking the review. But it's too soon to have a a general figure that we can put on that at this stage.
Okay, thanks very much for that, Robert. I see no other questions on this report. So can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, thanks. Item seven, then, before he's reported on budget investment proposals, you asked to give the report.
Very pleased to bring these forward. Obviously, these stem from the budget setting process and the motion that was presented by the SNP in terms of the overall budget position, looking at tackling social inequalities, the transition to net zero, et cetera. There are some particular elements that I think are worthy of picking out. And the benefit, obviously, is across the city. I've already referenced one of those areas, which is the spend on drugs and mental health, seven hundred and sixty thousand pounds, including a hundred thousand pounds for protecting people. There's also significant funding being allocated to support some of our activities on tackling social inequality more broadly in the city, including funding for the work that's underway with Scottish Government on a child poverty pilot. And of course, the Fairness Commission's ongoing work. There's some important, I think, developments as well in terms of the environment, looking at enhancements to parks, to play parks. Again, benefit across all communities in the city, as well as looking at increasing our capacity from a street cleansing point of view for work within our communities, which I know has been an issue that we've all raised. I think there's also some other developments that are quite innovative, but also important in supporting third sector organisations. So you'll see budget proposals under four B, the creation of a post within the third sector, which will provide opportunities for maximising fundraising opportunities. That, again, a demand from the third sector for more support for the applications that they often have to fill out and that expertise being positioned within DVVA to provide a really important role. So I think there's lots of good stuff in here, which hopefully members will broadly welcome and recommend this to committee. Now, let me just go back. Bailey McPherson, you were first. You're on mute, Fraser.
Yes, I had just realised. Apologies. I was just saying that I agree with much of what you've said there. But I do want, in relation specifically to parks, to point out that the reality of that particular area of expenditure is that what was originally in the draft capital plan and what is now replacing it in relation to certain parks is a good deal less. In fact, it really represents a big cut in what the rather imaginative original proposals were by Environment Management. So far, let me give you some, three examples specifically. Dawson Park, originally four hundred and fifty thousand of a capital spend in the capital plan, axed, replaced by sixty five thousand. Care Park, five hundred thousand, replaced by seventy five. Castle Green, seven hundred thousand, replaced by two hundred thousand. Now, I'm not knocking the proposed expenditure and but I'm very conscious of the fact that that is the one area where we have some concerns because we tried, as you know, convener, in the budget process to put back in these original levels of capital expenditure. I have one other thing. I don't want to appear completely moany because the reality is a lot, a lot of what's in that report, we would welcome with open arms. And in fact, if we take away the issues around parks and street cleaning, I think I agree with everything else that you said. Can I just make a point regarding street cleaning? Now, I actually spoke with Mr Boyle before this report was actually released. I had spoken with Mr Boyle regarding the whole issue of street cleaning initiatives. And he very kindly gave me, you know, the the thinking of the the department in relation to the funding that had been included in your budget, which I might add, not only did we put back in the original capital funding, but we supported your proposals in addition. But I do want to make one specific point regarding street cleaning. An enhanced take pride in your city programme is fine as far as it goes. But the bottom line is you will never completely tackle the street cleaning issues in the city whilst you're still sitting with a staffing that is twenty eight net less than it was in twenty fifteen. And I've said this point so often, I'm not going to labour the point, I'm just making the point. But what, which leads me to my question, because it's a run on street cleaning. And I was really wondering if officers could give an indication to me. Will there be some engagement with elected members regarding the initiatives across the city? I welcome, you know, the 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 use of the two hundred and fifty thousand that's come forward. And it sort of makes sense what is written there in three B on in 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 the appendix, one in the report. But I'd really be grateful if officers can give a commitment that there will be some engagement with elected members before the final programme is all put together so that we can highlight issues in our own wards that may be worth including or at least be considered for being including in in such an initiative. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. I'm sure Tony is happy to take that point on board. So, Tony, can I bring you in?
Yes, thanks, convener. Thanks, Billy McPherson. Yeah, just absolutely to confirm that Billy McPherson is right in that assumption that we will be contacting elected members to consult with them before we put forward the actual detailed proposals.
That's appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, I will bring in Colly. So I think councillor Short, you were next on my list.
Thank you very much. I was a wee bit struggling there with my with my mute button. I do apologise. Obviously, I'm buttoning in to speak about what we're doing in the way of fairness. And again, talking to the fact that I was away last week and speaking at APSY and it was with people across the whole of these aisles. And we actually did have a round table about fairness and what can be done about the cost of living because it's happening all over, obviously. And we forget sometimes how invested we are in this, the Scottish Welfare Fund, these initiatives that are going through today. We are very innovative in the way that we are trying to tackle many of the problems that are here in Dundee and wider in Scotland. And I'd just like to basically give praise to the people who do get involved in that delivery. And many of us would have seen them on Thursday night as they they were seen as shining in their area. And also the fact that in this fairness agenda, what we're doing is we're actually reaching out much wider than the city borders. And I think it goes to show the partners that we're taking with us. One of the partners in it is Scottish Government, the DWP. Another partner, which is a massive one, again, relating to York, is the Joseph Rowntree Foundation. When we started Dundee, making Dundee as a living wage, it was the Carnegie Foundation that partnered with us for that. So these partnerships and the way that we can articulate as a city, what we prioritise and what we need to show as the things that have been important to us is so incredibly important. And I think we do really well to highlight and shine that on what we need to do in this city. But we're not scared to tackle it, talk about it and try and change it where we can. And we do have the levers. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much, councillor Short. Certainly endorse everything that you say. And I think what this demonstrates is that not only do we recognise the challenges that we're actually trying to do something about that and recognising them in a meaningful way by putting some resource into these areas and hopefully having an impact, a positive impact on many of the citizens. And you're right to reference the increase of the budget for the Scottish Welfare Fund. And that obviously is in addition to the funding that was announced in May, which related to ongoing food support, ongoing support for the third iteration of fuel wells. So, you know, there will be more funding, I'm sure, that will come forward. And as you say, we're continuously trying to look at this through the lens of the impact on citizens and come forward with actions, whether they be innovative or simple solutions. Sometimes the best solutions are the simple ones. Thank you very much for that. So I'll come to councillor Flynn next.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Can I just take on board all the comments that have been made, all the positive comments, how we're actually going to be allocating this funding? And I think taking to the transition to net zero, which is vitally important for us all here and everyone else within the city and the country, is really important as we look forward to what we're trying to do. I think in my committee earlier on, we actually put through a tender for an active freeway, but we're actually putting in additional funding within this budget proposal of a hundred thousand to do additional active freeway investigations within the city, certainly to improve the infrastructure, but to improve the climate, people's health, air quality, et cetera. And I think in addition, as I said, further on within the list that's actually put out here, there's also further investment for active travel infrastructure, for example, cycle stories, more cycleways. And I think that's vitally important as we look forward to the transition and sustainable and active travel options we're doing here. But touching on another topic was mentioned earlier in my committee by Billy McPherson with regards to the city centre and the importance of trying to revitalise the city centre, notwithstanding the amount of money we've invested within the city centre from Scottish Government and City's Alliance, et cetera, up to date. But we're putting forward another two hundred and fifty thousand to funding for businesses and events, which ultimately is to drive footfall and economic growth in coordination with our city centre strategic plan. So on board with this, I accept and I really welcome everything we're actually doing here. No surprise to many of us on the committee, I would say. But I think it's vitally important. We're touching topics here. This is only a me snapshot of what I'm seeing here, but we're touching things which is important to everyone within the city. So thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Flynn. Absolutely agree with everything you said. And again, going back to those core themes that were announced as part of the SNP budget proposals, when we debated that, I think you're right, they recognise the the significant challenges for people in the city through social inequalities. It's all about net zero. It's about the natural environment. It's about economic growth. So absolutely endorse what you said there. Councillor Anderson next.
Thank you, convener. I'm echoing a lot of these comments. When we got this extra two point eight million from the Scottish Government, we knew there'd be enormous pressures on how we allocated this money. money for one year additional funding. And I'm just wanting to really welcome the proposed expenditure. It's 350,000 on orchards, biodiversity, tree and bulb planting, improving play parks and spending additional money on street theme. So given Bailey McPherson's comments, I hope we'll be getting his full support to allocate that money to those areas of the budget. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Anderson. Obviously, both as Convenor as, as well as just a member of the public, I'm sure you're more than happy to see those proposals specifically related to the environment and enhancements coming forward as well. So certainly agree with what you said there. Councillor Creighton next.
Thank you, Convenor. There's no timeframe reassurance for the start and completion of any of these. Why is it missing from each proposal and can it be provided to elected members?
Thanks very much for your question, Councillor Creighton. First of all, I suppose a little bit of context for all of our new colleagues from across the political spectrum. So this stems from the SNP budget proposals, which set out the budget, budget for the year ahead. So generally, what would be detailed within that report is the totality of what is going to be taken forward over the next financial year. Wouldn't necessarily always have defined time scales against that because the formulation of some of these projects would still be in the mix. So this report is clearly an update on and providing further detail on what the outlined position of the, the budget that was agreed previously says. Within that, there will be service updates and commitments and reports that come forward that relate to each of these service areas. So for example, you would expect to see a reflection within the capital plan of some of the capital assets that have been provided for, as my colleague, Councillor Flynn, mentioned, sustainable transport. So they, they will likely come through other means in terms of the reporting process. This is just setting out the broader context and further detail for the budget. But I don't know if perhaps Robert is our section 95 officer wants to add any comment to that.
Thanks, Convenor. As you indicated, these were projects you agreed to take forward as part of the budget. Our aspiration will be to deliver them as quickly as possible once they've been approved and we'll be happy to keep members updated with progress as we go through the rest of the year.
Thanks very much, Robert. Councillor Cordell, sorry, Deputy Lord Prost.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to specifically welcome the investment at Castle Green, which is noted in the report as a prime location in the heart of the ferry. And I was just going to ask of officers that where possible, the community be involved with the proposed upgrades to ensure that it best fits their needs. And I was specifically thinking, for example, that if there are wheelchair accessible picnic tables to be sited in the park, then they are sited in the most suitable position. And that kind of feedback from the community would obviously assist in making those decisions. And I just also wanted to make a little pedantic point, if I could, about the investment at Grassy Beach. It's listed as 25 pounds. There's a very important K missing. So just to ensure that that report goes through with the full amount allocated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Cordell. No, it is actually 25 pounds and you should be grateful for every pound that you're getting. No, I, I just, I just, of course, it's 25. Okay. I'll bring in Tony in just a moment. I think it's important to say that both from our manifesto and also from a council position, then clearly accessibility is always forthright in the mindset of officers when looking at play park installations and equipment. But Tony, can I bring you in to perhaps add to that in terms of the specifics of engagement? Thanks.
Yeah, thanks very much, Convenor. Thanks, Councillor Cordell. Yeah, absolutely. The heart of all of this is accessibility and improved accessibility for lesser able children. And that's an absolute given that the officers will be taken forward, as is a requirement really to consult, to make sure we make the best moves in, in terms of what the communities of interest want in places like Castle Green and other places that are detailed within the report, Convenor.
Thanks very much for that. Thanks for the question. I see no other questions or comments on this. So can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Item eight, then, is a report on the provision of debt recovery services. You're asked to give the report.
Again, self explanatory. Any questions, comments on this? Councillor Short?
Thank you, Convenor. And this is probably a plea. If ever we needed to carry a message from this table to the wider city, then I think this is the time. I don't think any of us want to be in a position that anybody needs to use the Services of Scott and Co. And unfortunately, when it comes to it, a lot of people don't actually physically see the ramifications of council tax. So it's one, and this is where I use my lived experience and it kind of gets hidden down under the pile. But I have learned through my interactions that actually it's the one, it's the one important one, your roof over your head and your council tax are so important. And there is lots of opportunities to speak to people. I've actually gone pre-COVID into the office and spoken to officers with constituents. And if you have conversations and you're engaging with the council, it's so much better than, than worrying about it, but not actually reaching out and doing something about it. Because I, I've heard about people that have had, they're just in a continuous cycle and they can never get ahead of it. So as we are in this cost of living crisis and, and people are going to get more and more bogged down with everything that's going on, can I just ask if it could be travelled from here, that people do speak to the council and, and try and put something in place so that, that the sheriff officers and Scott and Co. just sit there and fiddle their thumbs all day? Because that's the, that's the scenario that we don't want to see presumably around this table.
Thanks very much for the comment and the, the point being made, Councillor Short. And I think it's always really important to emphasise that the kind of debt recovery action is always absolutely last in terms of the series of events that take place before we get there. And I know that the team, our fantastic advice services, and I know that both Jackie Capell and Craig Mason are on the call tonight, do fantastic work in terms of that early engagement, signposting and support. And as we've mentioned tonight, there is support available both from the council and elsewhere for people that are in financial crisis. And the first point of call should always be seeking that advice and seeking some, some support. And you also rightly say that sometimes people will bury their head in the sand, unfortunately, and it will have a significant impact, both on their credit rating, sometimes on their mental health, and obviously on their financial position. And again, reiterating that point. So there is ongoing communication work and I'm sure I'll bring in perhaps, I'll defer to Jackie in just a moment to, to come in, ongoing work to make sure that that is communicated. And of course, it's important to emphasise the point that when we send out the council tax letter, we also include pamphlets that detail the advice services. So that is an ongoing piece of work that has to be emphasised because there is support, we can support people at their time of need, and it is just about contacting the relevant team. But Jackie, can I perhaps defer to you in the first instance?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. And thank you, Councillor Short. Yeah, we will always try and communicate with citizens as much as possible. You know, once the council tax bills have gone out and if someone's late with payments, we'll send correspondence to them. We changed all the wording on our correspondence to try and make it a bit more inviting to people to make contact with us. And we send hopefully gentle text reminders on a monthly basis to remind people about their, their payments and to make contact with us as well. And working with the sheriff officers, we've ensured that they understand the principles of Dundee City Council and they treat people with respect and understanding if people do not contact us and end up with the, with the sheriff officers. So we meet with them on a regular basis to ensure that they are adhering to, to those principles of the council and treating people with respect and understanding. So we'll continue to do so.
Thanks very much, Jackie. I'll come to Councillor McHugh next. Can I ask, please, if we can, to use the chat function, just because I have to jump between screens and I don't want to miss anybody? Dorothy?
Yes, sorry, I did try to put a question in the chat, but it wouldn't allow me to do it for some reason. And I just want to say, I have some lived experience in a previous life with difficulty with council tax. And I found the staff at the council who deal with the collection of council tax to be extremely helpful, very supportive, very respectful and very kind and understanding. I couldn't, you know, praise them highly enough. They were really excellent.
Thanks, Councillor McHugh. I think that's a really important point. And that kind of feedback is really valuable. If I remember correctly, you might have even emailed me at the time to, to let me know that feedback, because it's rare, I suppose, that we get that kind of positive feedback, that we can feedback to the staff members concerned. So I think that's a really important point. And again, I'm sure Jackie and Craig will take that kind of comment back and reflect that to the team as well, because they do incredible work in the most difficult circumstances often. And the job isn't going to get any easier anytime soon. So again, just passing on that formal thanks, I think on behalf of the whole committee. Thank you very much. Okay, I see no comments or questions. So can this item be agreed? Thank you very much, Willie.
Okay, item nine then, before you say the report on IT capital expenditure, which is for noting.
Any questions or comments on this particular item? Nope. Okay, can I take that as agreed? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 10 then, before he's a corporate IT network company, report, you're asked to give the proposals.
Again, fairly self explanatory. Any questions, comments? Nope. Can I take this as agreed? Thank you.
Item 11 then, before he's advice strategy for Dundee, you're asked to give the recommendations.
And again, I think that neatly follows on from the discussion that we've just had in terms of advice services and the advice strategy for Dundee. Council Advice Services partner, will partner initially with Brooks Bank, Dundee Citizens Advice Bureau and Scaf Plan Services, with scope for more locally based advice agencies to commit over time. There is extensive work across the city. And again, additional funding has been deployed in recent years to support some of that work with specific focuses on age demographics and other groups. And there is much more that we would look to do going forward as well. But I think this is a really important document that sets out that general direction of travel. So I think it's Bailey McPherson first.
Thanks very much, Convenor. I have no problem with the report, but I do have a query regarding the sources for anticipation of future demand. I'm sure I've seen this before someplace. And some of it's really quite old. I mean, it's referring to local community plans, which are frankly at the end of their, their five year term. It refers to ward profiles in the case of the majority awards, ward profiles from 2016, six years ago. Now, the reason I'm, I'm highlighting it is I'm very conscious in relation to advice services. I think more people are going to find their way, their way to our advice services and those provided by our partners in the months ahead, given the cost of living crisis. And I, I suspect, including people who perhaps in the past have not found their way to, or, or required the support and help of advice services. And I was just really wondering if, you know, how, how is that increased demand, particularly from, if you like, non benefit households, going to be ascertained? And how are we going to be publicising services to ensure that we're making, you know, as many members of the Dundee public aware of what is out there?
Thanks for the question. I think it's a really important point that you make. And clearly, in addition to what's set out in the report, there is a lot of detail that we have at our disposal. So the data that's been gathered through experience, through administering crisis grants or our own schemes, such as the Tenant Hardship Fund, for example, will help inform that demand as well. But if I can perhaps just defer to Jackie, I think, in the first instance? Jackie?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Convenor. And thank you, Bailey McPherson, for your question. Certainly in terms of the increased demand and how we intend to make people aware of the services there, we will carry out a comms strategy with, with the communications team around making everyone aware of what the advice services team are there for and how we can support individuals. We obviously have the Advice Workers Forum, where advice workers throughout the city get together. Now, pre pandemic, this was held on a, on a regular basis. Since COVID, it's been suspended, but we're looking to resurrect that during this year. Again, that will get the message out there around what support is out there for, for individuals. We obviously have, over the past 12 and 24 months, seen an increased demand in requests for Scottish Welfare Fund and crisis grants. So we know that there's more individuals in crisis. And part of the Fuel Well 3 programme will be about gathering data around what support individuals need. And it'll be about advice services providing that whole holistic support to individuals. So finding out if it's employability, if it's benefit details or, or money advice or debt advice that individuals need.
That's very helpful indeed, Jackie. Grateful for that response. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Bailey Keenan, I think you were next.
Yeah, thanks. Like Bailey McPherson, I would anticipate that it's an area that will continue to grow. Obviously pleased that we're, we're looking to gather people together and look forward to a sort of strategy being formed up out of that. But disappointed that the housing associations and the, that were now involved at this stage, you suggested that that might be the case, that we'll bring others in to advice. But I know that housing associations have advice teams as well, often get concerned that their advice team might just be about a focus on getting their, their rent in for the housing association as opposed to good, solid, sound advice to people. But that, that could be wrong in, in my approach. But that, that would be a concern to me. And it would be good that the, the advice going across the city was pretty uniform. So the sooner perhaps they could be involved, the better. They, I would like to see some information maybe coming to around the skill set of our advice teams across the city to see that we've got adequate skill set for dealing with tribunals, given that, you know, some of them are a revolving door of resolve tribunal for, for a person only to find them, get a call, come back in again fairly soon. So, you know, that's, that's a real concern. So I wonder if officers could make a comment on the, these points that are raised.
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. I'll make an initial comment. And I think it's important to say that this is about an evolution in how we take things forward. So certainly not done and dusted after this report. And there'll be much more work that will continue in terms of that wider engagement. It's also important to reflect on the fact that organisations like Brooks Bank and like the Citizens Advice Bureau and the council do have ongoing engagement with the likes of Hillcrest Housing Association and many others. And that will all be part of that broader discussion and broader input into the, the strategy going forward as well. But I'm looking at both Jackie and Craig. I don't know if either or both want to come in, but I will defer to you both.
Yeah, I'll certainly start off and then if Craig wants to, wants to come in. Certainly with the housing associations, there's certainly informal links with the housing associations. And we can certainly look to bring them in to the strategy. The advice workers within housing associations and the council, Brooks Bank and Citizens Advice often do refer to each other. So if we get someone from a housing association with, with specific issues, we may refer to the housing association advice workers and vice versa, if they can't support them themselves. So there are those informal links. As I mentioned earlier, the Advice Workers Forum, which took place regularly pre pandemic, the housing associations were invited along to, to that and, and will be again once we restart that going forward this financial year. In terms of your second point around the, the skill set, we can certainly bring something back to you around the, the skill set of our advice workers through, through all the partnership, because it is very much a partnership and we work together with, with the other partners. So, so we can certainly bring something back and around and stats possibly around the success at tribunals to, to let you see that we are trying to support individuals at these tribunals. Craig, do you want to come in now?
Craig, yeah, thanks very much, Convenor. And the questions around the tribunal representation, we do have several welfare rights officers within the service who have got years of experience, represented tribunal, both upper house and first tier tribunals. The main sort of focus in recent years has been to try and get the decision right first time without the need to take someone to tribunal. And partly the work that we've done around GP surgeries and getting access to good medical evidence to support people's applications is part and parcel of what, what we've done to try and reduce the number of tribunals in actual fact in Dundee. And that's been pretty successful. The, going back to Bailey McPherson's point about the, the data that was in the report, the advice strategy is 11 documents. So we are adding to it as we go. You'll notice that some of the, some of the local area plans are more recent than others. And I think that is the information that I took from the website and we're updating with the other agencies. The information team though, and the chief exec service, I'm constantly in contact with them. And recently, And recently, we've supplied some information around the Stobswell West and Llanawthon areas that are the areas concentrated on by the Child Poverty Partnership. So we are in constant contact with the information team, trying to get the best information we possibly can about caseloads in Dundee and also particular issues. And I'm also using on a regular basis our stat, our contact with Stat Explorer, the DWP system, which provides us with up to date information on caseload levels in the city.
Thanks very much, Craig. I think that was a comprehensive answer. And clearly it'll be an ongoing discussion in terms of you know, the wide range of participants and contributors to that, that discussion. Sorry, I've come off the screen to check. I believe it's councillor short next.
Thank you, Convenor. I was trying to hold my phone from my page and trying to do the mute at the same time. Sorry. And so I, again, I have to pay tribute to the fact that we work so effectively to find partnerships. And not everybody wants to go to the council and not everybody can find their way to CAB, but they can get themselves along to Brooks Banks. And there is choice for everyone. And I think that's a really good system to have in place across the city that not everyone is the one top, one stop shop. But you all know what each other are doing. And I've worked and, and I've, I've worked across national organisations and they've been very concerned that they've had very low numbers from Dundee. But then they've been reassured because we're actually doing it at a local level rather than to have it and to use these Scotland wide resources. And one of, one of the things that I was brought to mind, Jackie, was also the, the hope outreach that there is in the city as well. And obviously that's, it comes through the Health and Social Care Partnership. And but that's very, very effective at working with older people across the city. And I know being a member of the board of CAB, that they've worked really effectively with Tracy and her team to help older, older people in the city when they've needed that support. So that was just one that I wanted to comment on and bring in as well. And also just to say thank you for keeping all these dialogues open and just being aware again of what's going in the city and where that help is needed. And yeah, the red ones just keep chapping away and chapping away till we get it that we've got something for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor short. Thanks for those comments. I see no other questions or comments. So can I take this item as agreed? Thank you very much, Willie.
Okay, thanks. Long night. And twelve, Chief Executive Service Plan, you asked to read the report.
Again, self-explanatory report. Any questions or comments on this? No, I see shaking heads. Can I take this item as agreed? Oh, sorry, I was too quick. Councillor Flynn.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Can I just make a comment? First of all, Convenor, about the NEC, we're all talking about sustainable transport and the cost of living crisis we're actually in. But I'd like to give a, a bit of credit and applaud the people behind the NEC card of the under twenty twos and ensuring that, as it says in the report, 350,000 cards have been issued, making it easier and free for people to travel across this country. And I think I'd be more interested in finding out actually, because it's actually helping to address the poverty issue. But the, the data is a bit outdated, obviously, because it's behind. But we've seen an increase as the schools are way to break up shortly on the uptake within even the city itself, on the uptake of the under twenty two card and school level.
Okay, can I perhaps defer to Andrea Calder in the first instance? Andrea?
Yeah, so in Dundee, our figures at the moment, we've got 16,500 of our young people have now got their, their card. And as a this week, over 680,000, yeah, 680,000 journeys have been undertaken using those cards. So that's just since it's been implemented. So there's a lot of good use in Dundee. So we are now sitting at 56.7% of our young people. The lowest uptake seems to be between 18 and 22. So we're going to be doing some work with universities and the college around targeting those people. And our new primary ones will be targeted as well. Any school leavers would be targeted as well before the life school because the process within the schools is easier.
Thanks very much, Andrea. Mark, have you got a supplementary?
Just to say, thanks very much for that. That's really impressive. And actually good to hear that the benefits are actually being put out to the young folk within the country. We've got 90 plus percent are taking up with the over sixties of the free travel and the free card. And I think that's just goes to show that's the target we've got to meet. And our apologies for all, the hard work your team are doing. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Okay, no further questions or comments on this report. So is this agreed? Thank you very much, Willie.
Okay, item thirteen then is a Brexit update report. You asked to read the proposals.
Again, this is part of an ongoing series of reports that provide updates on the various implications of Brexit upon the city and upon businesses and individuals as well. So I'll just open it straight to questions and comments. So councillor Duncan first.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. In looking at this report from the chief executive, I think he will recall that I, I and others on Friday afternoon discussed these matters. And one of the things that I mean, I'm not looking for the exact answers tonight, obviously, but I had asked the question that, you know, insofar as we know, are the new arrangements that seem to be coming out going to make more or less money available one way or the other to the citizens of Dundee? And I think the answer that officers provided was it will be less. You know, whatever way you slice it and dice it. And so my question for tonight, but going forward is, you know, in future reports, can we actually have an attempt to actually outline that financially? Because I think it's important that the people of Dundee know, you know, the consequences of, of what are happening. And actually, the detrimental consequences of what's happening.
Thank you very much for the question. I'll bring in perhaps the chief executive in just a second since he was specifically referenced. But as an immediate response, you're absolutely right. And I think the implications and the impact upon citizens is going to continue to have a detrimental impact, not least because the UK government seem intent on moving forward with proposals that are just chaotic, shambolic and blatantly stupid. So there are no further comments I can make other than those. But perhaps Greg, if you can come in on the discussion from Friday. Thanks. You're on mute, Greg.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, councillor Duncan. I think your queries in relation to UK Shared Prosperity Fund. And going forward, there will be a briefing that will be given along with a further report to come back to, to committee. There is a difference present with the timing of when we're getting information, hence why details not included in this report. But when we report back on the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, we will try where possible, albeit given the significantly difficult task it is to report back on funding that we think is aligned with current funding streams to best present that information to committee. So I'll give you that undertaking. But just to emphasise, it is not an easy task to match funding like for like, given the significant variables that are contained within it.
Thanks very much.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Mr Colgan. And, you know, I do, I do appreciate that it's somewhat an unfolding movable feast, as it were. And it's, it's difficult to compare exactly alike with like, because we're in uncharted waters, obviously. But my, my fundamental point is that I think, you know, the citizens of Dundee do know, do you deserve to know the consequences of, of what's unfolding? So be grateful for that information in future.
Absolutely. And I suppose it's less of a feast and more of a dog's breakfast. But I'll pass it on to councillor Anderson now.
Thank you very much, Convenor. As the, the Brexit experiment continues to fail spectacularly. It's really a question around how officers manage to keep on top of the risk register. Because when they originally produced this risk register, they couldn't have imagined that they'd have to wait this long for the shared austerity fund to be unveiled. They couldn't have imagined that we'd be the first country in the world to impose sanctions on ourselves. The UK would be the first country to do that. And they couldn't have imagined that we'd be world leading and breaking the law. Because when this meeting started this evening, Liz Truss was laying the ground for the legislation that's going to breach the Northern Ireland Protocol and which may spark a trade war with the European Union right at this point. So my question is basically to ask the chief executive and officers, what resources and support do you have to keep on top of the detail of the increasing risks posed by Brexit on a daily basis?
Thanks for the question, Heather. I'll perhaps come to Andrea in the first instance, because I know Andrea's been doing extensive work in this area and her team have been working on much of that analysis of the risk as well. So Andrea?
Yeah, so I think as councillor Anderson's outlined, it is very much a moving feast. You know, obviously tonight, we've seen significant risks of maybe a trade war, which kind of starts to look, make us look back maybe at our no deal Brexit issues that we had a few years ago. So obviously, we're looking at all the things as they unfold and continually trying to assess the risk. We've got a Brexit advisory team that still meets. So we are still meeting and that's officers across the council who are looking at funding, finances, procurement, regulatory matters. So we've got good expertise across the council all coming together and looking at the risks. And we're trying to reassess those on a regular basis and then bring updates to committee. And I think that that risk register will as likely to shift when we do the next review. So we'd be doing that probably as we go into the next meeting. So we're meeting every two months at the moment. We might have to shift that back to monthly. And we only moved to two monthly this year because things looked at the beginning of the year to have settled down.
Thanks very much for that response. And I think it's important to say, obviously, as our relatively new Europe spokesperson, councillor Anderson, I'm sure you're going to be exceptional in casting that forensic eye over issues, given your experience in the European Parliament. However short it was, I think it will be really important and a benefit to the city as well. So thank you for your question. I see no further questions or comments. So can I take this item as agreed? Thank you. We'll move on, Willie.
Okay, thank you very much. Item fourteen then before his period products report, you asked to read the recommendations.
Again, this provides an update on the work so far. So I'll come to councillor Alan Nakla.
Thank you, Convenor. I welcome this report and I think that really proud to be Scottish because they're one of the first countries in the world to actually provide free period, period products in public buildings and public spaces. It's just, it's a great step towards breaking down gender inequality. The report, I was really pleased to see that when I'm one of the questions asking young people, what period products would you like to available at your school? There was, you know, up to 32% saying reusable pads, 34% saying period pants and 29% saying menstrual cups. Now, a few years ago, these would never have been mentioned. So I think it's incredible that our young people at the forefront of looking at sustainable products. So at the future provision, it says that people have requested learning more about reusables. And with zero by Scotland saying 400 million single use products are disposed of every year, and that's 340,000 flushed every single day. What will this look like in terms of young people wanting to learn more? And also, what would those time scales be? I understand it's quite a specific question. So I don't know what is to maybe get a briefing over to me. But I just think when we look at those figures, the time is really now. And they seem to be, you know, I'm just so impressed by their desire to want to use these products, that I think that it's just such a good time to kind of strike while the iron's hot.
Absolutely. I think that's really vitally important comments that you make in recognising the contribution of those young people, especially as our new equality spokesperson. But I'll defer to Andrea and Audrey as co-authors of this report. So Andrea, perhaps first of all?
Yeah, so obviously during the discussions with the young people, they were very keen to, to know more about reusables and obviously to try them. So we have been piloting those in schools. So schools have, have got resources available to them just now and having those discussions. You'll note in the report that we are going to be working with Dundee and Angus College on a joint resource to try and go in and have some of those wider conversations. So as soon as that resource is available, we'll be doing more communications. We'll make sure that people are aware of all the different resources or types of products that are available. But also have those conversations, break down the barriers so that young people know that reusable is obviously what they want to have in the future. And obviously from that sustainable point of view. So we're, we're in there just now having those conversations, but we'll be expanding that once the schools open back up and they're available also online as well. So people can order reusables online as well.
Thank you very much. Anything you'd like to add? Audrey?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. And thanks for the question. Yeah, obviously, Andrew and the team are working in that side of things. The other side of it, of course, is the curriculum and the, the personal social and health education programme in there. Also, as part of that wider team, I have education officers, education support officers, looking at what we, we still need to input into the, that health and wellbeing curriculum to keep that conversation going. And of course, our young people are absolute champions of climate change and and all of the issues that connect there and, and gives us a great opportunity for interdisciplinary learning and having conversations about real contexts that they're dealing with in their lives. So it's, 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 it's not just about getting on for information, giving them their voice to feed into the process, but it's also about helping them to co-design aspects of the curriculum that will help to share, share that information that they need. So officers are working on that side of it too with our head teachers and our guidance staff in particular in our schools.
Very much. Councillor Alan Nakla, that answer your question?
Yeah, that's brilliant. I think you're right. They are championing the, this kind of reusable products and whether that can even work alongside trying to get that into adult learning. Because like you say, it's, there is breaking down the barrier so that we can not only take advantage of the free period products, but also talk about climate change and environment and things. So thank you so much.
Thank you for the question. Councillor Short next.
Thank you, Convenor. Mine was more to do with the, the community side of things. And I think it's really interesting that the community home delivery has shot up. And I, and I think previous to Covid, it was about going to community places. And then obviously, we pivoted like we did with most things. And then we started to take addresses and send them out to people. And I think that has made a huge difference. And it's so much more discreet because often there is intersectionality when it comes to to, to the provision of these products. And I just wondered if there was still within the delivery opportunities for the, the Violence Against Women agenda to, to put information about services that are available. I know that hopefully many people, again, will have access to one of the other apps, which is Pick Up My Period, which is a Scottish government one. And but what it does is it drills down locally. So that I know sitting here that I can go over to the regional performance centre. So it gives you exactly where it will be close by. And so, yeah, is that, is that resource still being used? And are people aware of that? Pick up my period because now all the police know about it as well.
Thanks, councillor Short. I don't know who wants to take that, Andrea?
Yeah, so pick up my period app. Obviously, we will be doing a lot more promotion of that. We'll have posters and lots of other resources going out into the various localities that we currently have products in. So the period app will give people details of where they can pick it up, when they can pick it up, particularly in evenings and weekends. So all the details are there. We're going to try and keep that as up to date as possible. And in relation to the online and delivery service, as that's done out with Dundee, so we're not doing that ourselves. We're doing it with a third, sorry, a social enterprise, Hey Girls. So we don't have the facility to actually insert information in locally to that. So I'm sure there's other ways that we could look at doing that, whether we do that alongside some of the products that are available in the community centre, schools, et cetera. We could have a look at that.
Yeah, we were doing it, we were doing it in the Food Network. So that's probably where it's come from. So thank you.
And we could still do that because we will be put, still be putting products out to the Food Network as on an ongoing basis.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Okay, no other questions or comments on this. Can I take the item as agreed, please? Thank you. We'll move on.
Item fifteen before he's the Dundee Climate Fund Report, you asked to read the proposals.
I'm delighted to see these proposals going forward, not least because Dundee again leads the way. This is the first of its kind led by a local authority. Certainly in Scotland, if not the UK. And I think this could be an important vehicle for education as well as delivering projects as well. Obviously, the sum of money we're talking about is not going to solve climate, the climate emergency in itself. But I think it potentially But I think it potentially is a model which we could use to develop further funding streams. And again, focused on participating budgeting, a cornerstone is something that Dundee has worked very hard on in recent years as well. I think this is a really important project and I'm glad to see it moving forward. I will come to Bailey Keenan.
Yeah, convener, thanks. You know, I'm not going to divide on the proposals. I think the economy is a scale that seven hundred thousand would buy more than a number of smaller projects. And, you know, it might well be longer term on a much bigger scale would have delivered more. The, I'm wondering whether there is a sort of plan for it to be, you know, the five hundred capital being a capital spend and the revenue being something that will be an ongoing revenue cost? Or is it revenue being used to buy a capital expenditure for any project? The other one was in relation to the judgment panel that will sit and wondering why there is not the chance for councillors to be on there. Because I'm sure that whilst we look at climate change, then there would be a bit of knowledge picked up for people in looking at these projects, you know, and getting an understanding of what's out there for the point of view of, you know, what would make a real difference. So as that in discussions with other groups, we could maybe gain that knowledge and help bring the other things forward to the city. So, you know, I thought it's an opportunity missed, not to give the opportunity for councillors to be involved or councillors to be involved.
Yeah, I'll maybe take that last point first and then I'll come to colleagues who are on the call as well. I think it's important to say that essentially, these are ideas that will come from communities themselves. The communities will make that decision what is best for them. And the panel is there to ensure that the applications meet the criteria. So I think in that sense, we should be reassured that we are all active participants in our communities and we'll have a role in that. And of course, through the committee process, we will receive those updates and contribute towards the criteria and making sure they are fit for purpose as well, which will define which projects, you know, generate or attract the funding associated with it as well. I think it's also important to say that it isn't just purely about a financial mechanism and delivering something at the end of that. It's also about community empowerment and also about education, as I say. And this, I think, is a blueprint and a vehicle that we could use to build on. So I very much see this as a starting point. I'll be looking for partners, organisations, national governments to come to the table to potentially contribute towards future arrangements as well. So I think the fact that we're starting off on this journey, and as I said, reiterate the point that we're the first of its kind in Scotland. And probably, I think, based on my research, however limited it may be in the UK, this is something that might well attract further funding streams as a new model for delivery. But with all that said, I will bring in officers now. Brian, forgive me because you've popped up on my screen. So I'm going to defer to you in the first instance as our climate change lead. So Brian?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Yeah, it certainly is a first. And we have had quite a lot of interest from both the climate change teams and the community teams within the Scottish government who are looking at this closely and seeing how we could be best practice for the rest of Scottish local authorities in terms of community choices approach to climate change. In terms of the representation from elected members, we're very keen to get your support within your respective communities. You'll see from the report that we have a number of engagement mechanisms that we are looking to put into place, both in terms of advertising and engagement with the different community groups to receive bids and support them in that over the lifetime of the fund. But also in terms of the voting as well to make sure we get a good spread across the city. And we will be supporting interested groups that perhaps may not have as much experience in formulating applications. And again, the application will be pretty straightforward and quite simple, but we will support them directly to work up proposals that they can submit, different projects within their respective areas.
Thanks very much, Brian. And again, I think it will be something that we'll look to bring back to committee in terms of updates on the proposals that come forward and that ongoing engagement with communities as well.
John, the capital and revenue aspect of it, is it a one off two hundred and fifty thousand that could be spent on capital? Or is there going to be an element of supported revenue costs?
Yeah, I'll just come to officers on that question specifically. So perhaps Robert, can I come to you in the first instance?
Thanks, convener. So it's a one off allocation of the total seven fifty K. The, we've been careful to try and design the programme so it doesn't limit what people can do in terms of where that's at. And it can support revenue and capital costs depending on what the bids are. So that will be some of the work that the panel will do as they look at the bids. But we've tried to make it as open as possible in terms of whether it's revenue or capital.
Okay, thanks very much for that clarification. Okay, I see no further questions. Oh, sorry, councillor Anderson.
Just a suggestion, convener. I think we're all really excited about this. We know it's brand new. And we know the officers are going to have to put together materials and information. So it was just, it'd be really good to have a briefing from officers as soon as they've got some of that material ready so that all the councillors completely understand what this is about and how it works, so that we could spread the information as widely as possible.
Thanks very much, councillor Anderson. I'll probably take that a step further. Rather than a briefing just specifically on this, it might be worthwhile at some point having a briefing from Brian and his colleagues on the broader work that's underway to tackle climate change in the city and make sure it's a little bit more all encompassing. Because there's a lot of work, of course, being led and supported by the Dundee Leadership Group amongst others. And again, that broader update might be very well received by members across the chamber. Okay, thank you very much for that. Is this item agreed? Thank you. The end is in sight, colleagues. The end is in sight. Willie?
Yeah, thank you very much. The remaining item, item sixteen, is the gender note on the establishment of recess subcommittee. You asked to agree the terms of the note.
Again, self explanatory. Councillor McPherson, you have an amendment?
Yeah, I've not put anything in writing because it's a very straightforward thing, convener. I fully accept that we are the smallest of the three groups on the council. But the point I think we would like to make, I've actually been a member of the recess subcommittee since two thousand and three. Whether there's been one Lib Dem, two Lib Dems or four Lib Dems, there's always one on the recess subcommittee. And the point I would like to make is it puts us at a considerable disadvantage compared to the other two groups. Because essentially, what we cannot do is second our own amendment at the recess subcommittee. Now, I'm not trying in any way, I and my colleagues, we're not trying in any way to change the balance on the recess subcommittee. We recognise that the administration should have an inbuilt majority, as is the case on the council as a whole. And we wouldn't seek an increase in our numbers at the expense of anybody else. But we feel that in terms of fairness, in terms of the ability of us to second an amendment, for example, which we couldn't do as things currently stand. And I say this particularly because, as you know, the Olympia tender report is a good example of an important piece of work that will come forward. Not suggesting for the moment we'll necessarily want to amend that, but all I'm saying is it's an important point. So what we are proposing is that instead of five, three and one, it's seven, four and two. It creates exactly the same balance as the recommendation before us. But it gets rid of the issue of the fact that one group on the council cannot propose and second its own amendments.
Okay, thanks for that. I can see councillor Duncan wants to second, so I'll come to him next.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't sort of be able to the point, but I think what Billy McPherson sets forth is simply reasonable. And that's all we're trying to be, a reasonable representation.
Thanks very much. I think I'm actually minded to stick to the status quo. And the reason for that is it reflects our custom and practice. And, you know, I think there could be an argument, forgive me, Derek for putting you on the spot, that Derek is equally in that position on normal service committees. Obviously, different situation there. But I'm minded to stick to the status quo and to move forward on that basis. But I'll come to councillor Keenan first of all.
It would be to, if that was to move forward, it would be to increase the core number of people for the committee.
Okay.
They'll leave it at three, but.
My suggestion is that we keep the subcommittee as detailed in the report. So can I have a second now, first of all? Colleagues, don't all rush at once.
I'll formally second you, John.
Thank you very much, councillor Dawson. Now, Bailey Keenan, you're suggesting, I'm sure Bailey McPherson is happy to accept that tweak alongside his amendment. So on that basis, I will just ask Willie to go to the vote. I think we're clear on where we are. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. My understanding is that the motion by yourself, seconded by councillor Dawson, as we agreed, the terms of note as indicated, the amendment by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, as a proportion be in the basis of seven administration, four Labour and two Liberal Democrats from that group. That's my understanding. Going to the vote then, convener?
Motion?
Councillor Alexander, Anderson?
Motion?
Lord Provost?
Motion?
Deputy Lord Provost?
Motion?
Councillor Dawson?
The motion?
Councillor Nakla? Councillor Nakla?
Oh, sorry, motion?
Councillor Flynn?
Motion?
Councillor Hunter?
Motion?
Councillor Lynn?
Motion?
Councillor Rome?
Motion?
Healy Sours?
Motion?
Councillor Short?
Councillor Smart?
Here, motion, sorry, Willie.
Thank you, councillor Smith?
Motion?
Councillor Tolland?
Motion?
Bailey Keenan?
Motion?
Councillor Crookshank?
Motion?
Councillor Finnegan?
Motion?
Councillor McHugh?
Motion?
Councillor Curvin?
Motion?
Councillor Scullen?
Motion?
Councillor Shears?
Motion?
Bailey Knight?
Bailey Wright?
Sorry, motion?
Bailey McPherson?
The amendment?
Councillor Coleman?
Amendment?
Councillor Creighton?
Amendment?
Councillor Duncan?
Amendment?
Bailey Scott?
Motion?
It gives you twenty three for the motion and four for the amendment. The motion is carried.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for your contributions, your comments, your questions tonight. I believe that is all the business. So thank you very much.